I'd like to call the Village Board of Trustees to order. All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll call Ermely, here. Feeny?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Mynell? White?
Here.
John?
Here.
Ken Ziegler?
Here.
And Mynell said he should be here shortly, so. Public comments. Anybody in the viewing audience or on social media have any comments? Any comments from the viewing area or social media? Any hands up back there? Who's on the screen? You? Michael? Okay. Nate, what are you doing then? Doing the camera? Okay, I just wondered. Just wanted to make sure we know what everybody's doing. One more, any more, any public comments at all from the viewing gallery or social media? Hearing none? Let's move ahead. And here comes Mr. Trustee Mynell. Public hearing, all right. Minutes from previous meeting, number four, twelve twenty-one twenty. Board of Trustees moved to approve.
Moved to approve.
Board in five. Moved to approve by Feeny. Minutes of the Board of Trustees and the Joint Board of Trustees, Planning Commission and Public Works.
Second.
Second by Ermely. Sorry, hand or hand up. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. And you've got Mynell here?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Let's see. Reports minutes from Boards, Committees and Commissions. I see Finance. Anything you want to add there, Jessica? Nope. Any questions from Jessica? Okay, and Planning Commission. Any questions? Hearing none? Oh, that's it. Or do we have to approve those? Yeah?
Moved to acknowledge items ten and fourteen.
Second by White, second by Feeny. Anything on the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Reports from Departments. Finance. Or Keith, you have something?
I submitted a very brief report for the.
Yeah.
For the Board. I didn't make the packet, but I guess as far as any update items. I think at the time that was prepared, I know Sean reported on it, the. The accident, I guess on Friday that took out the bollards and lights at Birch and Smoke Eleven. Apparently there was a driver. That was, I was told that that was a hit and run, so it sounded kind of odd with all the damage, but anyway. That was one thing. And then also I did correspond with John Wallencamp from Keene earlier today in terms of talking about this schedule. For completing plans, specifications, whatnot, and then bid opening. So. As it sits right now, his schedule says, and he has submitted his plans to the state for their review. They have to only look at one version. They have to look at the complete build set. Their first advertisement for bids would be February sixteenth. Second ad on the twenty-third of February. They anticipate a bid opening on March twenty-third. And then would forward that to the Board for approval. That would be, as he has it right now, on April fifth. That's actually a day before the.
Election.
Election, I think. That could be moved back, could be moved forward.
So you only had to submit one, but does that allow something lesser to be built or over to be built?
Well, he's going to bid the alternate.
Oh, okay. All right.
State's just going to look at.
State just looks at one bill. Okay, got it. Okay. All right. Any questions for Keith? All right. Finance. Reports.
We're reporting the financial comments. I know we are going to have a joint finance and board meeting, right? Let us know that we will no longer be able to do the full walkthrough. So. I said, well, at this point, there's no need to have a joint meeting. Let us know if there's things that could be made. In the future, I'm going to be bringing to finance next time we meet if we want to go for our P for new assessor. Our for the assessor contract, Greg's is up at the end of this year. And at the time, we can decide if we want to look at a full walkthrough, do a bookie valuation or exterior evaluation. So we'll talk about that finance.
Okay. Let's see. Number twenty-two, presentation by Chief and Deputy Chief. Hello. Hey, back there. We go.
Mr. Roth, you have an item on the agenda later, so there's no reason, no need for you to appear, I don't think. You have an item on the agenda later.
Oh, David?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
As requested, we have our Chief Matt Savage and Deputy Chief Josh Finkie. And he had wanted us to just kind of lay out a little bit on, you know, how, you know, so I guess I put some bullet points together. You all have a copy in front of you. Just a little history and. And you can certainly just jump in there with any kind of questions, but I guess what I kind of put on here, you know, just a little bit of origin is. You know, two new board members, you know, Maloney and Sparks. So a lot of questions, trying to get some answers, trying to get cut up to speed. And you guys can jump in at any, you want to take it, you can take it too. I don't care. So. I know I have some questions on the, on the budget, whether it was monthly or annually. The presentation, the format, the year-to-date stuff that we've been working on, that now is all in play. It's completely fixed or done. Not really fixed, but just added because it wasn't requested before. The engines was a surprise to trusty Sparks and myself. If we would have done a little bit of more work, we would have seen that they were approved. And in fact, I think Hushang actually approved them. And but it was, the process made me a little nervous as far as the bidding and there was actually no bid process. We just went to one. And we've changed some of that stuff now with the Department, too. The management, the style, the, the reporting. I had a lot of words put in here just to kind of spark a little discussion. Let's see. Commission appointments was quite contentious. In fact, we had mediation by one of the attorneys by. Why can't I?
Dietrich.
Dietrich, yeah. So he came in and we had a couple hours that night, you know, talking. And it still went on for several meetings. In fact, it was here and several people had some opinions on appointments. Let's see, attorneys, it went out, the attorney went out for RFPs, which it should have. And because of that discussion, we actually changed some of our rules here as far as contacting the attorney. So that all of us together as trustees do that. The same thing with the Board for the Safer District. Not a single director can go out and talk to the attorney or ask questions. We actually have it on our agenda every month. And, and we can discuss it at that point. At that time, though, Wally was having some side conversation that. It won't be allowed anymore with the directors. Let's see. And then we did do it out to RFPs and Shane Vanderwal did win the award. We had two other ones, one out of Milwaukee, and then the other one was Northern Wasa, Northern Wasa, Northern Canada. No, just north of Wasa. So but it was agreed on at Vanderwal and Dietrich was the right choice. Dietrich has a longstanding relationship with the Board there. Contracted Communities was another deal. And that was actually kind of a rousing deal. We actually. I think Josh, you actually changed the formulas, or both of you did, you changed the formulas on how we charge communities. And so. Corona weather was pretty much the same as it was, but Town of Marathon, we actually went up with the new formula and the Town of Weston went down. We really lost nothing, I believe. In fact, I think we might have gained a little bit. But it really was just a kind of an evening, evening of the contracts there between those two communities. Meeting location was another issue, but now it's, I guess all we had to do is put our hand up and talk about it. So. Now we just switch back and forth and we alternate locations. I think this next one might be over at the courthouse because we might want to see the progress there. Let's see. Finance Directors, that was a big win, I think. I feel really good about that. We have Jessica and her group and Nicole and her group now working with Safer. Prior to that, we had.
Whitley.
Whitley, right? And it was a tune of about thirty thousand dollars. There'll be some savings involved here for both communities. And I just think it's going to be better all along. I think there's just going to be better communication, better representation at the meetings. We're right now discussing when we're at the Rim Mountain location, should just their Finance Director and Administrator be there? And then when we're here, Keith and Jessica could be here or Jenna. And that way we could just kind of share the information back and forth. It wouldn't have to have everybody come into all the meetings. So instead of twelve meetings, it'd be six. These two gentlemen will have to come every month. But I thought that was a big one. I put on the end here, after talking to Josh and Matt last week and this week, a little bit today yet. Possible things coming up, and Lauren could certainly attest to this. Lauren actually put some drafts together on some possible Safer charter changes. None of this may happen and it may happen, but we are discussing the number of the directors, whether or not to leave them the same or possibly increase. We are probably definitely going to change the veto. Right now in the charter, it's a, it's a single veto. And we don't think that's healthy as a partnership. You could get a rogue director in there that could play some pretty hardball. And we'd like to move that to a majority. So that's in the future. That's going to get probably changed. And then the contracted municipalities. So we're talking about, you know, the, the big three is Weston, Village of, excuse me, Town of Weston. Town of Marathon and Corona weather is our biggest one. To have them possibly have some participation, maybe a seat at the table. Maybe if we don't change the director numbers, but maybe a non-voting, somebody that's, that could be there just to be part of it. They've got a large contract with Safer and we don't want to lose them. They signed it one year to see how this goes. And we want to make sure that we earn their business and earn that contract with them for many years to come. So we don't want to lose that. So. You guys want to add anything? Or Yi, do you have some questions at all?
The only, I guess the, just going off what, some of the concerns that obviously former President Sparks and also obviously now President Maloney had. I know that you mentioned in regards to some concerns about engine purchases, the engine purchases and budget. I know that President Spark spoke quite a bit about budgeting, about the fact that it's not being budgeted actual or the, or the income was being estimated differently. You have to estimate a lot lower, a lot higher than the expenses, et cetera. So I guess some of my question here is in regards to the budget portion. What, has there been any policy changes or any procedures changes to make sure that we're budgeting it actual and if there's anything else that's being changed? I'm just kind of curious about that as well. And in regards to engine, I know that you mentioned that there is a process now that's being developed in regards to bids. And as the Board know, I'm a big supporter of request for bids here. And I'm just kind of curious as to how, you know, how, what that process is and how it's being developed. And are we, and are we expanding, are we requesting for proposals for more than just one organization or businesses now?
Why don't one of you or both just take on the ambulance that we just did last week? Yeah, so we went out for specs from four different vendors. We got four bids back. And I'm going to back up just a little bit. Those trucks did go out through a bid process. We sent out five different RFPs for bid on those. We only got two back. One was from Custom Fire, the apparatus manufacturer we purchased them from. The other one was from Stainless and Repair in Marshfield. We bought, we purchased one from Custom Fire because we've had a history working with them already, so we kind of knew what their background was. The ambulances that we purchased, yes, we had four bids that we, we reviewed at last, was that last week's? Yeah, last week. Last week's Board meeting. And we, we made a decision, the Board made a decision last week on which one to purchase out of there also. It was the lowest bid. And actually, it was the Chief, Deputy Chief and Kelly's. EMS Division. Your title? EMS Division Chief. EMS Division Chief. That was all their favorite. So it was a brawl and they were very happy that it came in at the lowest bid and. It, there's some different options that go with that as far as moving the chassis around that, that'll elongate that piece of equipment. So, yep. I, I think what, what maybe my concern was on the engines is the opening of the bids wasn't more public, I think. And I know I had some conversation and that it's, it's all been, on that, I feel like it's all been corrected. And we're more transparent now. And not that we were trying not to be, but we just are. So you had one more question there.
It was just if there's any changes to the financial policies, you know, how budgeting and et cetera.
Okay. You know, and the biggest thing there for me and maybe Wally is because, you know, like Clay, Wally was budgeting that department and Clay has a certain way of doing it. And I also do that on my everyday job. And I just wasn't familiar with some of the stuff. And I needed to see year-to-date. I needed to see several years in the past. And now all of that has been corrected. All of that has been done. And one thing I didn't have on here, we did have some management review. Okay, so some of that is. We can't really talk about, but we, we had actually very in-depth management review. For the Department and it's still ongoing. So we're, we, the directors made a decision to, I believe it was six months. Lauren, wasn't it?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't recall.
Yeah, it was, it was a longer, I mean, we didn't all agree. Lauren and I did agree. And we had a majority vote that we just wanted to have a. You know, you can call whatever you want, some training, some classes, what refresher, whatever. So that's all in progress too. So we feel, I feel very good about it. So. That getting that Corona weather contract when we didn't expect it was a huge win. That was a huge leap of faith by that community. And I've made several calls and conversations out there with Administrator Downing. And I'm going to attend a couple Boards meetings along with Al and I think Fred Schuster is too, maybe Lauren too. So, but maybe not. So anything else? Anybody else want to, anything else want to talk about or anything?
Oh, just that the, my changes are, excuse me, my suggestions on the charter were handed out at the meeting. And I am pretty sure they're, because we couldn't discuss them because they weren't on the agenda, but they were passed out. So those are some of the issues we've discussed all the way through the meetings so far. My only, my only concern is if we want participation by a contracted community, that whoever they want to participate in is, is willing to put in the time.
Right, right. I agree. I agree. Well, you know, Lauren, back on as a Director, was one of the founding Directors. And Fred Schaefer on the Village Board, or excuse me, the Town Board Supervisor, he was also one of the founding ones. So we, we've got a lot of history between those two members back on. And Jim is off, I'm still on and Al.
Alan was also a chart man.
Yep, he was too. Keith Lonahan was too. So actually we have four. So I'm the oddball. I'm the loudest one, but I'm the oddball. Okay. All right, with that, if that's it.
Just one, just one more question. How did, how did we do financially last year where we, we were in the green, is that correct?
We're in the black by about sixty thousand dollars, I understand.
At least.
And it's going to be closer to a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good to hear. We, yeah, there's some things coming together and, yeah, you bet. Good stuff.
I, the only comment I have to make is that I always like to hear these type of reports so that that way. Me as a Village Trustee would be able to be an advocate for that organization as well too. So that way I'm aware of what's happening, of all the good things. So that when constituents calls me, I can tell them that, that Safer is doing wonderful things. So I don't doubt that, you know, I'm, I'm always proud, but I always like to hear these reports so that. You know, I'm aware of what's happening.
Good stuff. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, twenty-three, Park and Rec. Anything for Sean?
I did have a report in the packet.
Okay.
You have any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody? Nope. Anything to add?
No, not at all.
Okay. Twenty-four, Planning and Development.
I also have a report in the packet.
Yep.
There's a few items on the agenda, including in ordinance tonight.
Okay.
So if you have any questions.
Okay. Twenty-five, Police. Keith?
I also had a report in the packet, just a couple highlights and then a few staffing updates. So for the month of December. EMPD had sixteen hundred and eighty-two calls for service. There were twelve hundred and sixty-seven in the Village of Weston. Captain Shane Hallman retired. His last day was January fourth. Sergeant John Rusnick was promoted to captain. And we're working on a sergeant process currently. We're also in a hiring process. We have two openings. Or we have a conditional offer to one applicant and are anticipating another conditional offer this week. Terry Peterson was hired back to do background investigations. That's proving to be a great decision. It's been difficult keeping up with our caseload. Currently we have, we've had an employee off for, since June on workman's comp. We have two more on quarantine. We're down two. We have another retirement February first. Brennan Palowski's retiring. And we're anticipating another retirement in the spring. So it's difficult to keep our positions full. Just kind of a, on our activity levels, the drug issue is seeming to be increasing between us and Wasa. We've got a lot of communications with, with their department. They're seeing a lot of overdoses that are resulting in deaths. We've had a few deaths, but we are responding to quite a few overdoses, as I'm sure Safer can attest to as well. Fentanyl seems to be what's entering our community, which is very, very dangerous. We are making progress on some big cases, but. I guess to keep it simple, we're outnumbered by the number of participants in that drug trade. Then we have officers. As an example, we had a pretty major case that we just referred. It's in the process of being referred from May, was summer case for overdose on LSD. So we're still seeing a variety of drugs that have been around for a while. And fentanyl is, is very, very concerning because it's very potent. It's generally being sold as heroin. So. Just difficult keeping some of that, some of that stuff, or being more reactive than I would like. But we only have so many people that are working proactively to, to do anything about the drug trade particularly.
So.
Hope it hasn't been helping either.
Yeah. So most of this stuff is not the less, or some of this, or a lot of this isn't like simply just marijuana issues? These are the hard potents?
No, we, we don't. Unless it's really, really large, which we have not had any cases, we do not focus on marijuana cases right now. It's heroin and meth, fentanyl. Like I said, we get a few brought to our attention like LSD, but heroin and meth are primary drivers. And it's really connected throughout the country and funnels through Wasps. It would be surprising if, if I was able to give a lot of details of some of the current cases on how far it's coming from. You know, we have a, we have an investigator that's part of our countywide special investigative unit. And that, that unit, I would like to see tripled or quadrupled just in size, but, you know, other agencies are facing the same type of staffing restraints as we are. But it is helpful for us. We have a lot of knowledge and activity in the players, drugs. The drug nexus is connected to almost all our cases, whether it's property crime or, or anything else. There's always a drug nexus. And the information and the intelligence gathered through that is really valuable in a lot of our other cases.
I have a question. Chief, you mentioned that, that the EMPD is currently being more reactive rather than proactive here. What resources would you need or, you know, or I guess what resources would you need in order for the EMPD to be more proactive?
Well, there's certain things that I'd really like to do that we have done some historically. Prostitution is still a thing. Our hotels are a hub for that and drug trafficking. Those are some reactive things we've done in the past. The prostitution is very time-consuming, but that also ties in with drugs. Human trafficking is generally associated with that, which is a hot commodity right now in the state and the nation. There's also proactive things like ICAC stings, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. We're part of that task force. We're also part of an FBI task force in our drug. Unit, I guess. So those are some of the, some of the things that I'd like to be more proactive, proactive with, where we're reacting to the calls we're getting. As far as overdoses and then we're working those cases backwards. It'd be nice to work those cases forward prior to getting an overdose. And I think you'll hear that from other agencies as well.
Understanding that, that you can't really give a lot of specifics. Is there an idea of how many players there are in the drug ruins around here?
Well, the, the difficult part is we're dealing with names that we've dealt with for the last fifteen or twenty years. They're in and out of prison and. The reality is a lot of these players, the only time they're not dealing drugs is when they're in prison. The minute they get out, they're dealing drugs again. And then there's new people that are folding into that all the time. And, you know, with social media and technology, the drug trafficking trade is, is a lot easier coming from out of state than it seemed to be years ago. So there seems to be a lot more travel. And I don't know if that's always been the case or our resources as far as the ability to track that through vehicle trackers and cell phones. Is we're able to put those pieces together in a timeline better than we were, but it's amazing how far that stuff comes to get here.
Any more questions? Anything you want to add? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Twenty-six, Public Works. Michael?
Yeah, I have four in the packet. Kind of just going through the status of several of our capital improvement projects. Winter, so not a whole lot actually going on outside, but several projects in, in design. I guess, well, lack of snow, it's been somewhat helpful in letting us, so crew get caught up in. So our brush clearing and storm pond maintenance, ability to kind of get into those during the frozen period here where, you know, we're not sinking equipment into the ponds. So, so it's nice to be able to have a winter where you can get caught up on items that kind of gone without maintenance for a while. Yes, other than that, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Michael? All right, thank you, Michael. Technology?
I don't have anything to add to my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for IT?
Yep, the only question I had is where, did we post up the videos from the last meeting and where was it posted on?
The, the last, all the meetings should go to the villages with YouTube page.
Okay. It's not the same YouTube page that, that Wassa Public Access is posting, is it?
Correct, it's a different one.
Oh, it is a different.
Village Western YouTube page. And then there's also a link on the Agenda Center. On our webpage, there'll be a, next to that agenda, there'll be a video link.
I, I think that's the best spot because that's where I noticed it. When it's ready, a little camera is there. Yeah, the camera is highlighted and then it's right next to the agenda. So you're, we're about one or two meetings behind, right? Maybe it's gonna get closer. I don't, I don't know what it takes to get it on there. But I pleasantly was surprised when I caught that on there and I actually hit it and realized, oh, wow, there it is. And then I immediately turned it off because I was speaking. But yeah, that's, that's a good spot. And then the other one, do you have that posted on our webpage, on the Village of Weston webpage where you can find the, other than the agenda?
Yeah, we, we have a general YouTube link off to the side.
Oh, okay.
Make it more prominent with their different areas probably.
Okay. Does that help for you?
Yeah, I was just curious where.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Yeah.
I know Sherry didn't have a report in it, but she just wanted me to mention that we should be receiving the absentee ballots for the February 16th election and that in-person absentee voting will start on February 2nd. And go through the 12th, that Friday.
Thank you.
And then all the W2s are mailed.
Okay. Yeah, I got mine last week. Thank you, Sherry. Okay. Why do I always forget if we have to approve those?
Knowledge.
Knowledge, reports from departments, please.
Move to acknowledge.
Move to acknowledge by zone.
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the question. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. 28, Work Product Transamentals. December building permits?
Move to approve items 28 and 29.
Motion to approve 28 and 29.
Acknowledge?
Acknowledge?
Yes, acknowledge. Thank you.
By trustee Feeny. Did I hear? You did? Okay. By Manel, trustee Manel. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, consent agenda. We have vouchers and we have purchase of a replacement utility van. Do you want to do those separately or together? Crickets.
Chairman, I believe unless someone chooses to take something out of that consent agenda.
All right.
It can be taken as a group.
Okay, we're looking for a motion?
Also move to accept 31 and 32 or approve 31 and 32.
Motion to approve by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. Ordnance is number 34, ordinance number 21-001. An ordinance to amend section 94.10.03, parent seven, approved materials and parent eight, approved materials and eight materials. Use of metal and other non-decorative materials. What is your pleasure? That went through planning last week Monday.
I guess my question is, what, what precipitated discussion on this? What, what, what made a planning commission bring this up?
I think we had, was it requested? Well, planning commission has been working on a lot of these issues with the roof and the side panels. I think we thought we had approved exposed fasteners a while back.
About 18 months.
About 18 months ago, and we only actually approved the, the roof, but we meant to approve the walls also. We also had in, in the same night, we had a gentleman. Okay, and so we, how big is that, Jennifer, about 60,000 square feet addition to that forest? I think that was part of it. He wanted to match his existing building for the, the factory portion or the manufacturing portion with some hidden screening on the highway with some trees that he'll leave. And so that was kind of part of it, but it's, it's been going on like Lauren said for about 18 months. It, it was a spirited discussion debate and not all of us agreed, but staff does recommend. And we, we got to keep an eye on this, you know, so, you know, that, that building, what do we call it out there right now? The building business park? And that's been kind of up for a while on changing that name possibly because it's really not.
Business Park itself?
Technology, business technology park. And I think we might have to, Jen, I think you actually brought it up or somebody brought it up that we might want to change that name to maybe better fit what's all the tenants are. So, am I saying that wrong?
This has become more of an industrial.
Yeah, more industrial. I'd rather not use the word industrial, but.
Manufacturing.
Yeah. How about Jobs? Jobs Park, you know, Jobs Park would be kind of cool. So I tried to throw some humor into the meeting and I, I got a Jennifer and Emily, Jennifer and Emily smiled a few times, but I did promise some other things. Anyway, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve?
Move to approve by Feeny. Second by Manel. Anything more on the discussion?
Yes.
Yep, Barb?
I think we're going backwards.
We are going backwards. Yes, we are.
But we are going to the point where once again, one of the requirements that we had was to give the buildings some style, some look, and what you are going to have here is what we've got across the street.
I totally disagree, and I think other members will do the same thing. I highly recommend you to drive out on Zinzer Road on the other side of the highway and drive in front of that new building that PGA is putting up, and that is all the materials that we're talking about, and you will be wowed. That, you look at that building and the different textures of metal that you think are wood or, or glass or darkened glass or whatever.
Nothing to say that others need to do that. All you're saying is metal. You're saying that they can use the, the, and I understand I was at that one when they were talking about the rivets or whatever you call them.
Exposed fasteners.
Yeah.
Right.
That they actually are better for wear or whatever than when they're underneath. I don't understand why, but I just think that we're going far too. We don't have hardly anything there in Wassa and everyone's, they even have more visible exterior requirements than what we have. And I, I just, I agree that it had gone too far. I, I questioned over the years some of the requirements for, you know, building permits and for other things. But I think this is going too far in that we are not maintaining any.
You know, if, if in the past we thought we were going too far in the other direction, I, I don't see any direction from the board or planning commissions in the past of trying to change it.
I don't.
Not, not, but nothing was changed. Nothing was brought up.
One vote never changes.
Well, I agree. I agree with your thought. And, and you have your opinion and you, any more discussion or any more thoughts? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So Carrie, so that's a, I believe a five to two. Ye, that was a yes?
Yes.
Okay, John?
Yeah.
Yes, 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 yes. Five to two. Okay, Renee? Resolutions, unfinished business. Report on status of discussions about options for tourism entity, new contract with convention and visitor viewer or different organization. I think this started out to be an informal, in, in full type discussion. We're not going to actually talk about any kind of contractor because there's nothing actually before us. But it, it's definitely, it's definitely, it's a juggling act right now. We, we did get some correspondence back. And I think as Jessica and Keith get this information back, I, I think that the, the thought is that we're just going to keep on sharing it with the board. So everybody's up to date. There's going to be no surprises. There's a mediation meeting coming up February 4th in the city of Wassa that we're invited to. I, I think Jessica, you and I are invited, right?
Is the invitation set for that one?
Uh, yes.
Because Rothschild's not.
Rothschild will not.
Anymore, so I don't know.
They may be attending, I, I'm not sure. So, but it's February 4th from 10 to 2 on the second floor up in the, in the boardroom, I guess. And, and it may change. It's changed twice now. I think Brent Carger will be there or virtually, and then I, I believe two other mediators will be there. Nick Patel will be there and Brian will be there also from the CBB. It's all over the place. We did get some direction from Matt Eady. You, you got some direction from Matt Eady that we don't actually have to have something in place until the end of April. So that's kind of a, a little bit of breath of fresh air, right?
I think those were, that correspondence to the chair of the board of the weekend?
I thought it was too. Yes, yeah, okay. All right, good.
I read one of them where it said that we had to have something by the time we collected January.
Our first quarter. Yep. No, our first quarter. Our, our first quarter is the end of April, correct, Jessica?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I thought I read January.
Yeah. We, we are still trying to find out or get proof that our, our money is still there. We are, I believe we're still getting bills or have recently got a bill for our second, third and fourth quarter.
They emailed for third quarter a while ago.
Okay, okay. And we, well, obviously we owe much less than what we believe they owe us. We've asked that question several times. We do not have an answer yet. So maybe that'll get brought up. Rothschild was going to join with Mozeni and now, and I don't know what legal status that letter has, but the letter came back and from some tourism group and told Rothschild that they can't do that, that they have to be with the entity that's here, which is the CBB. But, you know, there's a lot of different things here. And I, I'm going to say with what's going on right now, what we've been promised for the last two and a half years, I stand corrected with some of the actions that this previous board took with the previous administrator. Because it, it all, it's making a lot more sense to me now with some of the shenanigans that were going on. So, and that's all I'm going to call it. What we've asked for in the last two and a half years is transparency. We want to know where the money is going. You know, we obviously aren't collecting it and giving it to them, but where's it going? How's it being spent? Who's getting paid? Who's on the payroll? And, and Dick Barrett has promised me several times that he would share that. Every time I've asked him, yeah, yeah, I'll get that for you. I forgot. And I have never seen anything yet. Some conversations I had today with Steve was, and we checked with our attorney. We don't have to be pushed so hard this year if we feel that we don't need to move in that direction. We could take the year off and not collect the tax. And let that tax stay at the hotels and give a little bereavement to those travelers and, and not really the hotels. I think the hotels may scoff a little bit and say, well, we want an entity to helping us. But I, I guess I dare to ask, what has been happening this last year? I'd like to know what the entity has been doing for the second, third and fourth quarter. They are collecting the money. They got $120,000 from the, from our governor for the CARES Act. And what are they doing? What's been put out? The staff is gone. They're not in the building in Wassa. And now we just found out at the end of last week that they're vacating Wassa. And they have now got into the Shaky's building in Ramon. And they're going to renovate that building and move to Ramon. I, I don't want to share with you what Ramon said about that, so I'll let that be and you can kind of guess what they thought. But if they moved here, that would be our entity. So if they're legally, you know, turned, so. I, I've said way enough. So Keith, jump in.
Just a couple of things to kind of fill in. So you mentioned the letter from the, what was it?
Destinations, Wisconsin?
Is that what it was?
Organizations in Wisconsin, Village of Rothschild. I think our attorney essentially said that that's an overreach.
Someone was Wisconsin Hotel and Lodging Association.
Yeah. Exactly. I guess, because, because their position is, well, you've had a relationship with CBB in the past, therefore you have to, that's your only option in the future. You know, you're saying that's unreasonable. I think that's pretty, I would think that's kind of common sense. But anyway, that, and then I guess with respect to the thought of not charging the fee, we do rely on our 30% to support the Aquatic Center, one thing, and other, some other capital projects. I don't know, Jessica, I could probably speak to that a little more detail than me, but that's just one thing to be aware of. And if we do collect anything, we still have to split it up in that percentage that the law says we do.
So what would the financial impact be if we didn't collect it for, if we just said for a year, we don't want to get caught in this hornet's nest? And we want to, you know, just not collect the fee for a year. What would, what would the impact be?
Under COVID, it's a little different. So do you know what the 30% fee for the first through fourth quarters of 20 would be? Just a ballpark? Because second through fourth fell right down through the street, but, I mean, no, no idea?
Probably more accurate. No, I don't, I don't know what that number is.
Well, the previous year was well, COVID.
Right, right.
This, this last year is going to be probably pretty similar to this year.
I would think it'd be, give you a better picture if you went back a pre-COVID year. And as far as I know, it's quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
I mean, we collect.
It's definitely a lot of money. Yeah, so. Yep.
Fourth quarter is not due yet. So fourth quarter is not due to the image chambers. So we have three quarters and so far we have 66,000 that the village has for use.
Okay. And how much was that in the first quarter?
I don't know. We just have one number on it.
Oh, okay.
Tourism got 156. So tourism, we need to spend $156,000 on tourism related activities.
Okay.
And they have two?
Spend $70,000.
They got the first quarter?
Yeah.
Yep. They got, yeah. Lauren?
I have a question. I don't, I'm concerned if we suspend the collection of the room tax and contrary to our municipal ordinance that established it. Does that make our room tax null and void? We have to reinstitute it or? I don't think we can suspend the collection of any tax as well, deleting the ordinance. At least that's my opinion.
Well, that, we got the opinion from Matt Eady.
I think we can.
Yeah.
He also, I think he also says about.
He gave a copy of the statute in there. I didn't read the statute. Says we have to establish an ordinance. If our ordinance says that, then yeah, I guess the, the ordinance would have to be suspended as well, I suppose. But I, whether that's advisable or not, I'm not saying.
I think we'd have a hard time reinstituting it if we suspended and or deleted it. Because there's also provisions in the law that says that you have to have this established at a certain timeline. And if you establish it after the timeline, it affects, it's going to affect your collection rate.
Yes.
That's right, there are. I know there's dates that are stated in that statute, which I'm not.
That's what I was just going to comment because we originally started when some laws came through or whatever establishing some things. And we were checking back because we were a town of Weston and we were collecting and then we became the village. Did that follow us because that determined some of the
Timeline.
Timeline and percentages of collection. So I don't know if you would want to start all over again because you might be penalizing yourself permanently.
Yeah, well, it's just an option. We're just, we're just talking about it. We've got some time here. And I, I think we need to go into this mediation here a little bit, see just where it falls. There's some pretty strong-willed thoughts here though, that certain people cannot be involved in the CBB any longer. We, we would like to see a forced retirement and we want it to be very transparent. And we want municipal people to be on this board so that it is, it is 100% transparent. And I, I think there's some ownership now involved in the CBB with Badger State Games and some different things that I think is like a semi-quasi thing where they, they don't have to report to the municipalities. Which is definitely a big bone. Go ahead.
I just want to, I guess, ask here is that I know that we mentioned that there are some of the things that we want to hear, want from the CBB. Obviously, for example, President Maloney mentioned who's on the payroll, you know, what are they spending, you were using those money on. I, I know I talked with Administrator Donner a little bit about whether that list has been sent to the CBB requesting for, rather than, other than just the, how much money is left in there and for them to show proof. And from my understanding with my discussions with you, Administrator Donner, there hasn't really been a list that's been written out or asked from them. Am I understanding that correct, other than the amount of money that was all, the amount of money that they owe us or had, or owe us or have? But that's from my, my recollection with my discussion with you sometime last week, am I understanding that correct?
Well, Keith and I did have a verbal discussion, and we did not give them a handwritten or send them. But we verbally asked them for those questions. I don't think, we have not done that, you're right, but I, but I believe the city of Wausau has.
Sure.
No, because what I was gonna go next is, the next question I was gonna ask was, are we gonna include that list with the part of the discussions? You know, during the mediation, are we gonna request for those informations part of the mediation as well too? So that was my question. I think collectively, and you guys can jump in here, but collectively, the regional players wanna be together and have that same list. I think once we come up with that list, I mean, it's kind of verbal right now, but I'm pretty sure the mayor. Lori, who's on tourism with Wausau. I thought that they had said something there and, yeah, and we had kinda jumped on board. Rim Mountain is kinda back and forth a little bit with the Badger State Games, we gotta see where they play. Gary and George are staunch that they don't wanna be part of it if those players are there, so.
Well, the thing is, in prior, before, in the board. We asked those questions and asked those questions and put through some of the things that we felt were. A requirement for how things were gonna be, and we asked for an audit. We never got that, I mean, it was just all of a sudden, you know, we were, and then Rothschild is, you know, questioning also.
Yeah.
But to say, did we ever ask those questions? Yes. Did we ever get an answer? No.
We have never got answers that Jessica's has asked, Keith, anyone here, myself. And it, you know, it's just as heartening that, you know, on good faith, these municipalities are working with this tourism entity. The hotels are charging their, all their guests this, you know, fee, and it's a lot of money. And then to have it possibly not go in the right direction. And it should be going for tourism, it should be just enough to pay for everybody in the marketing. But it's designed to push tourism. And then, yes, there's a thirty percent component that comes back to the municipalities, and that's a strong component, in my view. Thirty percent is a heck of a lot of money, when it really should be for the tourism and for the hoteliers to keep them in business. And the restaurants and everything else that all goes with the funding, so.
So, go ahead. So let's say for sake of arguments. That the CBB just blows up in the next month or two. In order to, in order to be able to assess the room tax with the provision that seventy percent is spent on tourism. What could, what would some of our options be? Go to Mozeni or found a new CBB for the area?
Free and our own.
Do we have a room?
Well, and I don't, we don't wanna set our own, but we wanna do it ultimately.
But that, those are the possibilities.
But it's gotta, yes, absolutely, we can set up our own, yep, we can join, I was asked by Rim Mountain last week to go with them. And I think we either are ourselves, which the hotels do not want, or we're regionally with everybody, and that's where we need to be. We need to do the right thing for this entire area, so that we can all gain, you know, all, get the tourism here, get the bodies here, get the people visiting. Whether it be sports or, you know, plays or whatever, and get the hotel use the job that. The bowling tournament was monstrous for how many weeks that went on, Keith?
Yeah, the only concern, and the only remarks I would say is that I have full faith that this, you know, that this, this mediation discussion's gonna be a good discussion moving forward. And I think prior to us even deciding where to go or to answer Nate's question, trustee Phoenix's question. I think we should try to at least work with, work with what's currently hit there and try to resolve any conflicts or. And you participate, see how the mediation goes from here, and I think that's the first step that we need to overcome first before we start talking about what we wanna do. Whether it's by ourselves or with another entity, I think that's just my thoughts. I like to repair things that's still working rather than us throwing everything out, that's just my thoughts.
I've read some emails from all the municipalities, maybe not Rothschild. But if certain things happen, they would be back in with also some more things from the municipalities, so. Yep, I, you know, this meeting in Wausau has been put off twice. One was a personally, uh, issue for somebody. And then the last one, we just couldn't get the players there, and then now Brian has asked if he could invite Nick Patel too. And everybody from all the municipalities, including the mayor, everybody said, yeah, absolutely, that can be there, so. I think we just gotta solve this somehow. So it's an informational thing tonight, and it's gonna be fluid for a while. And as we hear more things, we'll have Keith send out some info to the board to let us all be aware of what's going on. And as usual, if there's questions, you know, raise your hand and talk to someone or talk to Keith or if I have the answer. Or, you know, contact another municipality if you wanna talk to them too. Okay, anymore? Alright, so that's just a status report, right? So, new business thirty-six, purchase of replacement quad axle dump truck and possible agreement for quad axle dump truck replacement program. Michael, yours?
Yeah, so as part of our capital improvement plan this year, we have the replacement of a quad axle dump truck. Truck being replaced is a nineteen ninety triaxle, so quad gives you a little more hauling capacity. This quotes went out to, I guess. Four or five of our local truck dealers. Got quotes back from four of them. Truck Country, Midstate International, Skippy, and DX Truck. Yes, the chassis staff is, I guess, recommending going with the Freightliner one-twenty-two SD from Truck Country. For one-thirty-three-two oh nine. I said it's the second lowest quote, meeting our specs. It's a step up from their lowest level kinda economy brand, just, is built just a little more robustly and better, better, more. I guess just better, for kind of the long-term maintenance and operation on the vehicle. And as far as the dump body goes, got quotes from three local companies. The low quote being from Truck Equipment for thirty-eight thousand five seventeen. Staff recommendation is to purchase the dump body from Truck Equipment for that amount. So if we went with the staff recommendation as is, the total truck price would be one-seventy-one-seven-twenty-six. Uh, which is under the budgeted amount of one-seventy-five. So then, I guess, one caveat, I guess, or as we started talking with Truck Country about this. They mentioned that they would offer the village a quad axle truck replacement program. It's a program they have in place with a couple other municipalities and I believe county highway departments throughout the state. So I guess the quad axle truck is something that we don't really customize a whole lot, it's pretty much just a typical dump truck. That's used for hauling, you know, snow, sand, gravel, brush. So they have a better resale market for that. So with their replacement program, they offer public entities essentially guaranteed trade value for the truck. So every year, we would be able to get a brand-new truck in April for roughly a five thousand dollar cost difference. And we could, I guess, in theory, continue that agreement infinitely for infinite years. With, I guess, either entity able to opt out, so if we find a truck we really like. We say, you know what, we're good, we don't wanna buy a new one from you next year, we're just gonna keep this one we have. Every truck would be owned by the village of Weston, it's not leased or rented. We would own it, then trade in. So if you look at, you know, we held on to this one for thirty years. You know, five thousand dollars a year, it takes thirty-five years to get that one-seventy-five number again. And every year, leading up to it, we're not having to worry about maintenance or downtime because we have a new truck, so.
Every year?
Yeah, so I guess.
That's in writing, thirty-five years?
Well, it's not for thirty-five years, that was.
Forty years.
So the initial proposal, I think they did is five years.
But five, five years is twenty-five grand, and it excludes us, it excludes us of bidding. There is no more bidding after that, and if I were them, I would do exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
I would, I would never want you to talk to another truck company ever, knowing that I have one truck guaranteed going to you every year. Yeah, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay, I was just bringing it to you guys.
Okay, no, I'm glad you did, but, you know, if we had this one since, what, two thousand?
Nineteen ninety.
Thirty years.
That's, it's definitely got its money's worth, though.
Yeah, you guys take care of it, that's good, gals and gals.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Lauren.
So we still have, would have to change the boxes, swap from one to the other, but.
They would build the truck to our current spec.
Including the box?
Including the box, yeah.
For only five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, that'd be the difference, so the way they.
That sounds way too good to be true.
So that's part of what my thought was too, but I figured it might be a little crazy. So our current purchase price, so if we were to go with this program, they'd make us add a few upgraded features. So that one-seventy-one and change number would go to one-seventy-three-five, and we'd have.
One-seventy-two-five?
One-seventy-two-five, yeah.
Okay.
So then, we have a guaranteed trade-in of one-seventy-one. And then, I guess, we'd be agreeing to that next year, we'd be paying one-seventy-six for a truck, so that five thousand dollar difference.
Even if the price of trucks went up more than five thousand?
Yeah, so I guess that's kinda why they, in, so the contract in writing is for four years to be then looked at again after four years. So, you know, again, to me, it sounded maybe too good to be true, but, but it was worth presenting.
So then in four years, and we could go off with that again if we.
We could if we wanted to.
So, so it shows. We still, we would still have a brand-new truck, expended twenty-five thousand dollars over five years. And then be able to go up to bid if we wanted to, have we talked to any other municipality other than their salesman?
We've not talked to any other community that they have, we've talked to the other dealers to see if they would be, if they would offer a program like that as well.
But, but dealers are salespeople.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think the due diligence part here is to talk to five other municipalities to make, and not, not who they tell you to talk to. I would find them out without talking to them, and because they're gonna give you perfect, you know, they're gonna give you, if you're very happy. They're gonna call you in advance and then say, hey, Michael, could we send a customer to you, and then you talk highly of this program?
Yeah, and, and I guess as part of this, as long as they don't. Have the truck built, I guess we're not obligated to do, to buy even a new one next year. If we tell them in July, hey, sorry, we don't think we wanna do this anymore. We don't have to, I guess, so, there's no, we have the opt-out version as long as they haven't built the next truck. Which they said it typically would do in like October of the year prior, so.
Mr. President? Yes, I'm sorry. So I definitely agree with President Maloney's remarks about the fact that if we, if we wanna go with the program. We should probably do a due diligence and reach out to those municipalities first. Other than that, if we're not going to do that, then I would make the, I would make the motion to approve the Freightliner one-two-two SD chassis from Truck Company. For one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-two-oh-nine and had Truck Equipment Inc. build it. And build the dump to a box for thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-four, total truck cost of one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-six.
Motion to approve as so read by Zong?
I'll second.
Second by Ermling on the question. Oh, okay, I got one too, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my question, and I was trying to get it straight in my head as you were going. Now, if we're gonna, we, initially, we're gonna pay a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand whatever for the truck. And we're gonna borrow for that. Now, next year, we're gonna get a new truck, but we're still gonna be paying on the hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. But now, our, what, every year, we're adding another five thousand to it. Do we go out for loans on that too while we're paying it off?
Well, for how tight everything is, we're gonna have to.
Well, yeah, well, I'm just saying, so the one-hundred-and-seventy-one.
Yeah.
Actually is more like the one-hundred-and-seventy-six. And then we're still paying on it, and the following year, now we're at a hundred-and-eighty.
Well, it's actually a hundred-and-seventy-two-five if you go with the program, so it would be a hundred-and-seventy-seven-five. My thought is, and great thought, Barb, my, I'm still in discussion, are we buying another truck next year?
No.
Okay, when's our next truck? When are we buying a piece of equipment like this?
Probably after another five to seven years.
Okay, I, I just think we have to, we, you know, are we really that good at watching stuff like this and, you know, and doing this? I don't know, is this really our cup of tea? And maybe we should just see what everybody else is doing and see how this program works and how happy they are. Getting a, like leasing a new car or a new truck, whatever, boy, I couldn't be happier, you know, but there's a, there's costs involved in that. You know, retrofitting and this and that, and if they only let you do it for five years and it holds you away from somebody else. There's a, there's a lot of dollars to be made with equipment at this price range. And like I said, I, I would sign you up all day long if I knew I had you for five or ten years.
I, I just think, you're never gonna pay it off.
Yeah. No, you actually won't.
I still think Michael needs to come to us with what the other municipalities are seeing.
I agree, I think we should, and then it'll just.
Because obviously, in nineteen ninety, the quality was built in nineteen ninety is a lot different than the quality that we're looking at right now. So if you take nineteen ninety, we got thirty-five, thirty-eight, thirty, whatever, however many years we got out of it. And then, you know, so.
All the specs are so different, I, I think, and I'm sure you would say. You know, just, just electronics has gotta be so different, I mean, I don't know, are you still fixing the same things you did thirty years ago? Or now is it all electronics and warranty work and?
It's a lot more electrical and hydraulics versus mechanical.
Right.
So then, are you asking for us to postpone this to the next meeting?
No, I'm not, not at all, I, I think we should go ahead with exactly what you did. I, I think the next couple of years, you kinda watch what's going on out there, and if it's so good, it'll still be there. And then we can get on that program.
I, I think if you read, if you read into his comments in here, that the selling, that the, two-twenty, as an example. Twenty-twenty-three subject, price subject to change based upon option changes. It doesn't elaborate who's changing what.
Right.
So are you, are you getting a lesser quality or lesser option truck down the future? It, there's just so many uncertainties in how they're, they're doing this, yeah, we're gonna be paying the additional monies. They're targeting, what, a couple thousand dollars the first year, three thousand, they're targeting another five thousand in two years. There's just too many uncertainties, I don't think.
Let's vote on this, so, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. I just have a question. With all the trucks being bought around here by municipalities. Are we talking to Rothschild, Schofield, Marathon County, Wausau, everybody collectively? And why I'm gonna do this is because fifteen, ten years ago, we had three people that always specked out our tractors. And we've got about a hundred-and-seventy-five tractors. And those three people knew exactly what we needed to spec our tractors at. I was driving to Florida with our family a couple of years ago, and I saw Walmart truck after Walmart truck after Walmart truck, daycaps, which we use. Freightliners, and we were, you know, Deciding Mac and Freightliner and all over the board. These three gentlemen, who are great employees, were constantly changing the specs to what they think we needed. And I finally, it's like the light went off, and I finally called our president when I was down in Florida, and I said, what in the heck are we doing? Why aren't we just buying the exact same spec that probably the biggest transportation company in the world is doing? And it's, it's Walmart. So we went to a Freightliner dealer, and we asked them what their spec was, and that's what we're buying now, and we're getting them a lot cheaper. We're not getting them with them as buying them, but we're getting a better deal in the trucks. If Walmart says they're good, that's what we're gonna do. So, here we are in Weston, our next truck is gonna be in five years. I guess my thought is, we should maybe be talking to Marathon County and other ones, and maybe collectively, somehow figure out how to buy together. And now you go to somebody and you have three or four trucks one given year and say, now what are you gonna do for us? Collectively, we might get these salesmen jumping up and down for that business, so, just a thought.
Yeah.
And, and then also, you'll be talking to your neighbors and having some discussions every once in a while, and that can't hurt us either.
No, I mean, we typically do that, as, you know, I know we spoke with Rim Mountain, the city of Wausau. like Corona weather, you know, we kind of figure out who's bought a truck recently. And, you know, we'll, we'll tour and see what they like, what they don't like about it and.
But, you, you know, when I talk to Josh and Matt are still here, but every time they buy a piece of equipment, that's one thing you guys really, not one thing, a whole bunch of things, but this one here, you guys are constantly talking to other fire departments and emergency people about stuff. And and comparing constantly on on who does what, what problems are you having? And I just think it would be good for us to do the same thing.
Yeah, and we do.
Okay, I I don't wanna labor it anymore here, so. Okay, um.
I believe we're on thirty-seven?
We're at thirty-seven, thank you very much. All right, um, oh, the school neighborhood here, why can't I get back to my agenda here?
Yes.
Okay. Mark.
Yes, we did take a vote.
Okay.
Yes, I, yeah, then I, I asked a question.
So, post-vote question.
Yes, I, oh, I didn't want to labor to vote any longer, so I'm sorry. Uh, here we go. Sorry about that, everybody. Wow, got a major problem with my index finger here. Uh, thirty-seven, uh, let's see, thirty-seven, Weston School Neighborhood East Change Order, number three.
Yeah, um, so I guess throughout the project, uh, I guess even early on, soon as the storm sewers start going in, I was found that there's an old abandoned gas main that was in conflict with uh, more or less exactly where the storm sewer were designed to go. And all the inlets were, I guess, made specifically for their angles. So the contractor had some, I guess, issues with uh, digging around and uh, cutting that old gas main out. I guess there's also disruptions, uh, jumping around costs due to charter frontier and to a certain extent TDS, not relocating their equipment and uh, facilities on time, so they have to stop one task to move to another. Um, so, been negotiating with the contractor for, uh, probably a month or so. Before Christmas, but uh, their initial ask is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Kind of, as we went through the justification stage with them, got them down to, I think it's the, well, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand. Uh, which seemed to, I guess, be fair, uh, makes sense for the work that was there, um, kind of outside of their control. It was, you know, had those items been known, I guess, figured that would probably be, would have been reflective in the bid prices that the contractors would have had on the project, so.
Well, if I can ask, what was the number one uh, change order worth?
The first change order was worth zero dollars. It was just a time extension.
Okay, then number two was just a couple thousand?
That was like five thousand.
Okay, and and that still kept us under budget for what this project was.
Correct, yeah.
This change order, will this change order get us to the finish line?
Yeah, it should, uh.
No, 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 will it? I, I know, but.
I don't foresee there, yeah, the only thing left is planting trees and seeding.
Well, I was a construction person, and I knew that, you know, that I could get a little bit more, and and so, instead of going for the thirty-five thousand that I'm actually owed, I go at an incredible amount of one forty-five, knowing that I really want thirty-five or thirty-seven. I'm not saying that this happens every day, but I remember reading in the front page of the paper when that whole, the, the county market, that whole interchange got done. We went with the lowest bid, that took ten years to build that. And then the lowest bid became the highest bid by about twenty percent. And um, this just seems so normal in, in this kind of work, and um, if we go into this building project, I I think I want to ask for a ten percent shaving off the price just because we're gonna pay ten percent more anyway, no matter what the number is, you know, so. Uh, it's just really disheartens me with everybody making all these, you know, mistakes, whether it be the cable guy or this or this or that. And uh, anyway, it's a beautiful project. I I've driven it so many times, uh, talked to some neighbors, it's beautiful.
So.
But go ahead.
I, I guess the one cap, there will be another, I guess, a fourth change order to just correct all quantities, which there's about, I don't know, I'd say fifty thousand dollars that probably won't be spent on the project, cause sidewalk was eliminated in some areas.
I thought you had written in here that it'll still be ten thousand under.
Yeah, so it'll still be ten thousand under, um, and then I'm confident of ten thousand, I'm pretty sure it'll be more, just because there's other quantities.
The fifty you're talking about, is it gonna be a credit?
Yeah, it's just work, it's work that's still in the contract.
It's not gonna get done?
Yeah, correct.
It's what's commonly called a balancing change order at the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, if I may just also add, I guess the issue with underground, anything, anytime you're dealing with underground construction, is unknown.
You're digging in the dark.
We don't, we don't anticipate such things happening on a new build. It's not saying there are hard change orders, but the same level of things, it's just not um, something we expect in a case.
But, but that's not us building, that's the contractor digging. So.
You're saying it's.
But, yeah, so that's somebody else that's contracted to do this work.
Right.
They put a bid price in. So if none of that stuff was there, and all, and a lot of other stuff was in there, and it was actually easier, we would not get a credit. If if they could have gotten this done two weeks ahead of time, everything was unbelievable, holy crap, this wasn't there, that wasn't there, this wasn't there, this one is here. When it all said and done, we would not get a credit.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it's the, the bidding environment, you have to create specifications in the plans to make it a fair bidding environment for everybody. So when something isn't on the plans that's encountered, then that's where these things come in.
Okay.
But how do they not know that Horizon and whoever else, I mean, TDS is what, wasn't, that was last summer, wasn't it?
So in, so in this neighborhood, TDS wasn't in until, yeah, I, I, so when the survey was done.
TDS was not there, so then when they started the construction, TDS was there, so now they're claiming that that was extra work.
I mean, there was times just where, you know, trying to put the sidewalk in, there was a pedestal sitting there, so the sidewalk crew has to, can only go so far, and then they can't move somebody else's facility, so then they have to go to another street to do, start doing their work.
But I, I had questions last summer, driving on, on Weston Avenue and driving on Alderson, where they were literally burying their cable a foot and a half off of the road. So we're gonna be dealing with that forever now, that they put it in the road?
Yeah, and they're allowed to put it in the right of way. We, we have very little um, control as far as where and within the right way they can put their facilities.
Wow. That was, uh. Sorry.
Those are a recent state, yeah, wasn't it? I believe so, yeah.
A question, in particular, the abandoned gas line, is there other portions of that gas line that we interfere with a future project? I know that gas line goes north and south, correct?
Yeah, it went north, south on all the, all those streets.
That path is very close to where I live, the, the main, the A and R gas line?
Yeah.
So, is there a possibility that we may wanna put that in the back of our minds that, hey, if you're gonna do a project in that area, we may have to, we may encounter abandoned gas lines?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thirty-seven, Weston School Neighborhood East Change Order, number three. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny?
Second.
Second by. Uh, the question, can't imagine any? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, thirty-eight, Weston Aquatic Center, two thousand and twenty-one season. John?
So, uh, we wanted to get this in front of you early, uh, we've been talking about the upcoming season a little bit. Uh, talked with the YMCA a couple of times, um, communicated with Rothschild. Uh, they did start some season passes back, uh, beginning of December. Um, they always sell typically more than we do before the first year. They have a lot of people that buy them for justice presence and stuff like that, so. Um, we kind of just held off, uh, just kind of see how things can go on, but uh, we need to make a decision if we're really going to open, just plan on a regular opening and a regular season this year. Some of the, uh, when I put in the request, um, I based it on the November, then November budget status report, but as you can see, there is the through December twentieth budget status in there that uh, the finance department provided. Um, it shows some of the Cares funding that the Aquatic Center received, so the loss that I showed or wrote in the RFC is not as significant after you see the December budget status report. Um, and it also doesn't show any of the transfer of the room tax funding, uh, based on, you know, we knew there was gonna be a shortfall on, on room tax side, we didn't know where that would end up. Um, like Jessica said, we won't see any fourth quarter numbers till in January. Um, on what totally is available, but I think she had in there around forty-three thousand would need to be transferred to offset the loss for the, you know, what the Aquatic Center is showing, uh, from twenty-twenty. So, um, really right now, um, you know, we're just looking for a direction on uh, the twenty-twenty-one season, so we can, you know, start selling, setting up and selling season passes, um, and getting prepared for the season.
When do you think we'll have the drop dead date of regular versus non-regular?
As far as hoping for the season?
Well, your recommendation is on a regular season, and then not recommending if there's restrictions. So when, when do you think we could make that? I mean, you know, I mean, it all might clear up, and we could open up after this week is over, but we'll have to see, but I just, I'm just wondering what you're thinking there, because you know, um, uh, the family that runs the, the concession stand did not pay themselves, and they did not make money, and they believe that last year was their test year, they should not be held to a contract this year if they can, and I, and I agree, and and I will also go along with everyone this year about closing. I'm not gonna be adamant on keeping it open if, if that's what it's gonna end up being. Um, I, I enjoyed seeing the cars there, but it, is it, is it worth it to everybody else that doesn't use it?
But I mean, you know, in the same time period, and I don't know if I shared this number with you before, we did, we did the total of about six thousand people
Right.
in six weeks of a season last year.
Versus a normal year of?
Really around fifteen thousand typically, in six weeks.
Yep, Barb?
I just was wondering, when is, and I hate to pass this, but when is the deadline as far as I personally don't think we're gonna be out of the woods by this summer. I mean, I really don't wish we would, but you know, um, what is the date that you would have to know whether we were gonna open or not? I, like I said, myself, personally, if we're having any restrictions, I, I voted last time.
Yep.
Don't open, we can't afford to open.
Well, and the thing is, I don't think there's, there weren't no restrictions put on us last year. It was what we put on ourselves.
Yeah, right.
You know, there was no, we have to do this capacity. The only thing that was really in place was the face mask requirement. Um, and people used, had to do that when they entered the building, exited the building, they didn't have to have it on when they're outside on the deck or anything like that.
It's just like a restaurant, a restaurant, you gotta have it on going in and have it on when you go out.
Right, but I think, I think soon as we make this decision, we're incurring expenses because soon as we start working with YMCA, they are working towards getting us open. We have a contract with them for two more years. So, if they're working on getting staff hired or putting together any paperwork or getting prepared for the season, some lessons started, whatever we're doing, we're incurring expenses on that contract. So we will be incurring expenses with the YMCA, uh, regardless. And I also placed in there, you know, with the pool of surface project that we have going, that we will be filling the pool regardless what happens. Uh, so we'll be treating it, heating it for a minimum of thirty days to hear out that uh, new surface and tile and everything, so.
Okay.
We will have expenses in operation regardless. So, you know, I think it's really a drop dead date for opening, you know, is right now, because, you know, if we're hiring staff and we tell, well, two weeks before, we're gonna tell them, no, you don't have a job. So I think it's really, we deal with those consequences as they come, but right now, we're making a decision if we're opening or not.
How much is, how much is the contract with the Y?
Uh, it is twenty-five thousand for uh, twenty-twenty-one.
So would, would that be eliminated if we said no, opening?
Um, but we do have a, there's some clauses in the agreement as far as what we pay based on uh, being open or, and getting out of the agreement too, but I think our drop dead for getting out of the agreement is this month.
Yeah.
Is it past?
End of January or it's past?
I think it was January. I think it was like a six month, like January one, so.
So we may have some consequences there.
And the YMCA, well, I've talked with them a couple of times, and they are ready for a full-on normal season. They think we should be planning to open, uh, under regular circumstances. Uh, you know, just based on what they've been doing. So they are open, you know, they, they're no longer reservation only, they're not limiting capacity. They do require face masks, they have to indoors, they are requiring them for exercising right now. But because we're an outdoor facility, um, obviously it's a little bit different, and they are, uh, they actually held their first uh, swim meet at the YMCA this past weekend, which
Okay.
You know, so I did talk with them about, you know, if uh, any of their um, team would have concerns regarding our facility. And um, and I also did talk to our concession operator, spent some time with them last week. And um, as far as staff recommendation is that, you know, I mean, I don't think there would be any restrictions put on us, cause there weren't none put on us last year, it was just recommendations.
Right.
And uh, everybody was being cautious, and we were being optimistic that because we were doing, so we opened that, you know, it would be super busy. Um, but we know that even this year, even if we planned to open on a, like a regular season, we're probably not gonna see the pass sales we did in the past. Walk-ins would probably be the same, but uh, you know, people are, good people, people gonna be jumping right back into buying a season pass knowing that we're still in this current situation.
You have a hand up, or, I'm sorry.
I'll yield to, to Steve Joe.
Um, I, I just want to say that even if the state or, you know, the federal government doesn't put any restriction on us, I think it's still um, in, in, in good conscience, we as a municipality should still set some sort of restriction. Because of that reason, I would not be supportive of opening the Aquatic Center just for the twenty-twenty-one season unless there's some sort, obviously some sort, uh, uh, unless we're out of this whole pandemic or deal, I just do not want us, with the cases climbing. Um, I, I just, you know, I, I, with all good conscious, consciousness, I just cannot do, uh, um, go be in support of, of opening the Aquatic Center for the twenty-twenty-one season. And that's one of the reasons why I was kind of waiting to see if there was actually a discussion, a deadline, uh, on an actual hard deadline here. And when we need to give an answer by, cause I, to be honest, I would rather postpone this vote for, you know, for a month or so, see how the current situation goes, and then make a decision from there. If we have to make a decision, a decision tonight, I will vote to, so, uh, I will vote to not approve opening the Aquatic Center.
Go ahead, Lauren.
So, uh, despite to what people's feelings are about immunizations one way or the other, I think we'd be remiss in, in our health concerns if it wasn't down to the point where the general public can get the immunized, if they want them. I, I don't think we should be required it, but I think when it gets down to the point where the general population has it available to them, then I think part of the responsibility of their own healthcare falls on the users, but I can tell you, my three-year-old grandson has COVID in California. California's a totally different country for some of us, but uh, that would be my main concern, otherwise, yes, people should be responsible, but we all know, we see people that are in crowded places without masks. And I'm in the high-risk category, there's some of us, no offense, that are a bit older and in a high-risk class, so. No offense, Barb.
A bit.
I am.
Go ahead, Sean.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't put any precautions in place. I'm not saying that.
But we're not being directed locally or by the state.
Right, right, but I'm saying, we still put a hand sanitizer.
None of us are doctors.
So, you know, we still put hand sanitizer stations out, we probably would still discuss, you know, possibly do an additional like cleaning during our breaks.
Right.
You know, where we wipe down handrails and stuff like that, cause you're, you're, they're still talking about common touch surfaces, so I'm not saying we wouldn't do anything to have precautions, it's just, um, you know, are, are there gonna be regulations that prohibit us from opening on a regular basis? Because, I mean, we touched base and talked Kalahari, um, in the lodge at Cedar Creek, I mean, and they, I mean, yes, their businesses have been affected, but they don't really have any restrictions in place.
I, I was in Kalahari two weeks before Christmas, and you're next, Steve. I, I couldn't even get in Kalahari, I didn't go in Kalahari to get wet, but I just went in there, I also went into the wilderness, cause they redid that one. I couldn't believe the, the bodies and people in there, uh, running, screaming, having a blast, unbelievable. From all, from five different states, so.
Yeah, with all the tracking that the county is doing, or that, that you're keeping track of who's infected, who you've been and all of that kind of stuff, it overwhelms.
Right, but from last year, was there, was any trace to the pool?
There was none. And, and there, there was no, there was no contact tracing issues. There was not a, a positive case that came out of the aquatics there. And there is a new study that was released by USA swimming and it's out there, and if you read it, that. Because of the nature of the aquatic center being outdoors, that literally they're saying that droplets coming out. People's mouths, noses, et cetera, is literally coming out, hitting the water and disinfecting immediately.
Does it chlorine?
Does it?
Safe to be declared.
And the fact that you are, and this is the indoor studies, and we're talking outdoor facility, which, what we've heard is even safer yet.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I mean, we're already past the date. I think, uh, a couple more here. Uh, my thought real quick is that we postpone the vote and not vote tonight, but go ahead, Nate.
Uh, yield to redundancy. I was going to.
Yeah, I, I would, I definitely agree the same. Only concern I have as well is that, uh, if I recall, Noah's Ark closed down this, this past year. Because they had individuals that, um, that, uh, that contracted COVID there and they're an outdoor, outdoor pool as well too, so. Um, if we were going to open, I would still want the same, uh, the same restrictions that we did last year. On the same part, uh, the, the same pool due to the fact that, I, I think the reason why we didn't have any cases was because of the measures that we put in place. Uh, to ensure that, if people were safe. So if we're going to open again this year, I, I want the same measures, uh, uh, in there as well.
Well, I agree and disagree on that one, because I think part of the problem with people coming to the pool is how. They had to register online or, you know, to make appointments and all that stuff, and there are, I think the. The restrictions you put on, on how they could get a pass for how they could get in there. I think just completely discouraged a lot of people, and I mean, there's people that just aren't connected. Go there because I wouldn't. I don't care how safe you say it is.
Yeah, and I think, I think everything was so new and we were tackling issues like every week and daily at that point. And contact tracing was, because who, who is doing contact tracing right now? You know, what facilities are doing it? I mean, for people entering and exiting your building, the grocery store, Walmart, nobody does contact tracing, so. To track a case to a specific facility is nearly impossible at this point, because nobody knows who's going in and out of anywhere. Uh, and that was why we were doing it. I mean, the YMCA can do it because they only have members coming there. They know who's there all the time. So based on what they were doing and, you know, what other facilities at that point someone were doing. You know, we thought that would be the best way to allow us to do it. Um, Wisconsin reps, I talked to them after their season. And they literally had a nightmare. They were wide open. They had a reduced capacity, but they were doing all their contact tracing and taking information from every single person that came there every single day. And literally you would wait in the line for hours just to get in because there's three hundred people in line and they had to. Get their names, addresses, contact information from every single one of them.
Yeah.
So it, it definitely affected their attendance too.
All right, um, well, go ahead.
Um, I, uh, uh, I think that going or. Next month or the month after, we'll have a much better and clearer picture and have some, uh, and have a plan that fits. What we know now and in the future, and I'm going to move that we postpone. Uh, the vote until the February meeting.
Motion by Feeny.
Bring in a motion right now?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion by Feeny to postpone until February.
I'll second.
Second by Zong on the question. On the question, that still means that we're moving forward. Correct?
Second by John.
Yes, I'm sorry, Feeny and John. Yep, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Thirty-nine, Mount Miller Park park lighting request.
And I'm sure none of you thought you'd see this coming back after, after it was approved at the summer meeting. Um, and I gave you some of the information and read as new, and it was provided by our trustee White, who. Loves reading village code and he found it in an obscure section.
You see that like it's a bad thing.
No, it's a good thing because I'm very nervous about it.
Um, uh, in a section of, of land use, uh, which is transportation land use. And you see the highlighted section in the attachment that was included. Um, and it literally tells you that you can only have that at a telepad airport. Or, um, like hospitals which are exempt. And this is a big section or a section, not a big section, but a section of the code that the village really. Has no need to look at it a lot.
It's obscure.
So, um, the fact that, uh, you know, we have somebody that reads that long code and found this. And, you know, when it was, after it was approved, realized that we were going against their own ordinance, uh, which is not possible. So.
I, I mean, it's an engine, it's a propeller. It's, uh, the only reason it's out there is because it's out of the outskirts of town versus Kennedy or somewhere else, which. Uh, he says right in there that he can't fly over dense areas, right?
Right, right.
Uh, I mean, I, I see him up in Merrill all the time, but it's on the edge of town and I, every time I see one going up in the air, I. Actually do a sign of a cross because I.
And the thing is.
I hope they get back down.
It's been even taking place in some of these towns. You know, if we share, we share a code of the town of Weston, if we share a code in the town of Weston, that's the same code as us.
Yeah.
Probably in their code. They can't, they can't legally be taken off from a farmer's field based on the way the code's written, so.
Exactly. Okay. Um, what's your thought? Go ahead, Nate.
Uh, I guess, uh, for me, I'm fine with, uh. Uh, with changing the village code as long as we can write a very narrow definition that only applies to. This sort of specific instance, and I think that as long as, uh. Uh, as long as our citizens would only be risking themselves, then generally we should let them do what. They want. Uh, also, this individual is, uh, is a, a former marine and. That's, uh, and, um, that, that means a lot.
Um, so you're making a motion?
Yes, I will move to approve changing the village code to allow Mount Miller Park to be used for powered paragliding. And have the user sign a waiver of liability.
Barb?
What if there's people?
Well, can, can we get to a two? Let's just see if it gets up first.
I'll, I'll second that.
You'll second it? So Minell is on the second, on the question, Barb.
Okay, well. What if there's kids out there? I mean, I, my father used to fly one of these things and they're, they're scary, but I mean, he loved it. But you're, you're coming down and all of a sudden kid runs out, you, those, you don't have that.
How do you claim your, and dovetailing into what Barb was saying, for me, my question is, how do you claim your area of the park? I mean, that's, that's quite an apparatus to take off, so you're going to claim an area, nobody else can play football there. We're not going to designate an area to do this because he's only going to do it twice or three times a month, so to restrict an area, now he's going to land there, correct?
Yep.
So now, uh, I, I, case in point, I, I agree, I, this is troubling for me, it just is, so.
I mean, that's.
I, I know you made the comment of, um, uh, it's, it's, it's only risking themselves so that we let them do what they want to do. I used to love driving fast and, uh, nobody let me drive fast, nobody. I got stopped all the time, so.
Well.
Anyway, but anyway, so we, we are up on a second, we're still in discussion.
Just a question, we wouldn't be, if an accident did occur there, we, or, you know, something was to result, we wouldn't be held liable, right?
No.
There's the issue on unity.
Is that correct?
But even so, I, I don't know if I particularly want to. I mean, it, it seems like there's, but you said the town or whatever, that they couldn't find a farmer's field that they could.
Yeah.
And, and, and based on my discussion, it's like cut of the grass being allowed them to take off, you know, or a field is not ideal. Um, and in the, after the discussion of public works at the summer meeting, there were some stipulations they wanted in that waiver.
Right.
We talked about, you know, baseball Monday through Thursday nights from five to eight. Uh, when people had the park reserved, because do you want to deal with this, you know, ninety-six plus decimal engine starting up and revving up for. Even though it's a short amount of time, you know, you're interfering with other users of the park, which we try to. Have multiple users doing different things at the park that don't interfere with each other, so you would hate to. Um, have that, so that was part, part of what I drafted in the waiver also, was that, you know, there was some restrictions on the time. When it could be done, uh, just to, you know, work well with the other user groups out there.
Well, we have. Yeah, we did, we did write it to be very narrow, uh, for, uh, for the circumstances. That would allow for, uh, taking off and flying.
Okay, so would you have a sign up out there saying? You know.
Watch out for.
Be aware, you know, that between this time and this time, you might have a airplane landing.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you did watch the video, it, it literally takes no space for them to take off or land, um, because they are on their feet. They're not on wheels. It's, uh, literally a inflate parachute, start the motor up and you, you're up. And then when you come down, you literally land, fill the power, wrap your chute up and you're done, you know, so. Just explaining what the process is, it's not, it's not like an ultralight, you know, it's a lot, a lot different.
Why, why doesn't he use the Wassa Airport? Why? I mean, is it, he's not, doesn't it have another spot to use than?
He does have other spots, um, he says, but he has to travel to get to them usually.
So Wassa Municipal.
Not close.
Wassa Municipal is two depths, there's two depths to use where Merrill is not, because Merrill's on the outside of town. And then he can, because he flies over like the farmland.
Like you said, he's, he's limited.
Twenty of them up there.
He's limited to where he can fly.
Probably goes to there. I, I wouldn't doubt it because there's an awful lot of usage out of Merrill, so. Okay. Any more discussion? Everyone understand what we're doing? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
No.
Um, I believe that's a one to a six. Yep, which way did he go, Zong?
I, I didn't know.
Uh, ye, I mean, I don't mean to call you by your.
It's all right, no worries.
Hey, Maloney. All right, so, uh, motion fails, uh, six to one. All right, uh, let's see, we are, Lauren, where are we?
Forty.
Forty, request by David Roth for village to forgive lien on property at thirty-four oh six Schofield Avenue. Jennifer or you want David first? Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm here just to.
David, you want to state your name and address for record?
Okay, my name is David Roth and I reside at thirty-four oh six Schofield Avenue.
Okay.
And I'm here just to ask the village to, like it states, to withdraw or, uh. I don't know under what circumstance or definition the village has on this property. It's not a lien. Because I called the clerk of courts and asked about it and the lady there said it's not a lien, so I don't know under what. wording the village has on this. But I'm just, I'm, she said it's like, like a debt or something, and she didn't know what, how to tell me the definition of it. Anyway, I'm just asking that the village release this or lift it or what, whatever word you want. And I do, I do have some documentation here of the, the court proceedings on, on this, how this acquired. And, uh, judge, uh, the judge, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost for words here. Getting a little bit on the age part here. It says that the, the village has denied attorney's fee or, uh, not attorney's fee, but. Here it says. Uncollectible attorney fees and costs. The village has not, has denied that request. So I don't know how this came about or. I'm just, I'm just asking for that to be removed, lifted or removed or which on or whatever, whatever you want to use.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I will, I'll, I'll answer them the best I can.
Well, this, this went through, uh, Marathon.
What's that?
Circuit Court. No, this went through, uh, Circuit Court and it was ruled in the. Village's favor for the ten thousand dollar stipulation to be put on a lien so that it gets paid. And, uh, that lien is going to be on your property, so you're not going to be able to sell that property without paying that ten thousand dollars. Uh, at thirty-four oh six.
Uh, the reason, first of all, I, I was.
David, I, I don't, we don't want to get into the, the, the court has ruled. Okay, so, um, to, to be able to collect that ten thousand dollars. Um, it's, it's been put on as a lien to be able to collect it. You have until, uh, two thousand twenty-six, I believe? Uh, twenty-seven. You have until two thousand twenty-seven to pay that ten thousand dollars. But as assurance, so that the village collects their money, that, that, what they've incurred for cost, there is a lien on your property. Uh, so that, so that the assurance is to get paid.
But what I'm asking is, I, I have documentation where the village was denied. Uh, what did I say on that? I got it right here. Attorney's fees and costs. But the attorney, Mr. Yidi or however you pronounce his name.
Yep.
Put this on there and it says right here, through my attorney, that he was trying to collect. The uncollectible attorney fees and costs against you under the. I'm not sure how you pronounce this word, G U I S E.
Guys.
Geisy, Geezy or whatever. That word, I didn't know what that went until I looked it up in the dictionary. And I found out that that word means as a, a mask, a masquerade. In other words, it's not the true, it's just a, it's a mask. It's masking the, the true content. And you, the village was denied attorney's fees and costs. So I don't know what this ten thousand dollars is, and the reason I signed that in representing my son. Is my attorney quit me and here I am in the middle of a lake and I don't know what to do, so I just. Threw my hands up and. And here, just like recently, I've got, this came up to the surface again, because Mister or Mister, Mrs. Faust. Uh, resigned, or not resigned. Uh, retired and it got sent to a different attorney or whatever and. I thought this was kind of all over the, under the bridge already and, and now it came to the surface again, here we are. I'm tired. And I. I just asking a little empathy on the village, but to withdraw this. I've, I've, I've spent twenties, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I spent twenty-six years of my life doing what I was doing, saving pennies. Twenty-six years. The reason my attorney, my attorney quit. He found out, I couldn't pay him no more. I live on my BA pension right now and that's all I do. Well, I don't have that until now, and until I sell it. First of all, the village, my, my opinion, when I speak, it's just me speaking, in my opinion. The village made one big mistake in the beginning, I believe, simply because, in the beginning, this was. My son, it was under my son's, uh. Accused under whatever, uh. And my son and I got together and he allowed me to represent him. But, but he doesn't own the property. That's the big mistake to start with.
Well, thi- this is.
What's that?
Not a opinion. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Own the property.
My son does not.
He is listed on the, the land records. We've been through this. This all goes back to an arbitration hearing. Um, that happened in, I think it was fifteen. I mean, I've been here for almost eighteen years. And have been dealing with this property at different levels. So this ten thousand dollars came out of a stipulation and order and out of an arbitration that happened. When you took your previous, um, you were having issues with your previous, uh, renter. Giuseppe, because he's also on there. Um, and this all went to arbitration. So the village was given that a ten thousand dollars was fines. That's what it is.
A fine for, for, for what I'll pick.
David, David, um, the court has ruled and, and you have six, you have, you, you don't have to pay this for six years. But, but if you sell this property, then that ten thousand is going to come off of the proceeds of the property.
And if it never gets sold?
At, at, in twenty-seven, it's. At at in twenty seven, it's owed, ten thousand dollars.
And if it doesn't get sold?
In twenty seven, it's owed.
I understand.
All I know. That's all, that's what the, that's what this says right here.
I understand that.
Okay.
I just asked the question, if it doesn't get sold? I I'm a little bit.
It's still gonna be owed.
It's still be owed, yes.
But if it doesn't ever get sold? Hypothetically, twenty years from now.
Uh no, no, no. It it isn't twenty years from now. It is.
I understand.
It is two, two thousand and twenty seven. I don't know the actual date.
I understand, I understand.
That's when it's owed. Okay, okay.
Asking the the board here, I'm asking for a little empathy. And and if this is a fine, that 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 it's a little bit strong, I think. It's my opinion, like I said, it's my opinion. And my son does not own this property.
Okay. You know.
I'm just asking for.
I I will not be voting to change this. I I I will not, I will not be voting to change this. I'm going to leave this just where it is. That's where it is. I, you can pull the board, we can vote on this. Uh I'm actually not sure if this is, is this up for a motion?
He's requested the.
It's requested a motion? Okay. And so it's the board's pleasure to uh either, go ahead, Barb?
Well, it's just that they were saying about fines. These were fines that went for years.
But no.
Yes.
Yes.
David, I I I've been on the town board and I've been on the village board twice. This is my third time. And it has been years. It has been eighteen years, David.
This this year document is just under this one case, this one time, not what's happened twenty years.
Lasted two years.
Yeah.
Two years of a lot of people's involvement.
Yeah.
I was at the arbitration for the whole day. So was building inspector Tri-Tetro. The village administrator at the time was also in the room. And then we also had the attorney and use of the attorney's office. And that was two years into the whole, whole issue.
So, I'm sorry, Lauren. I I think it's unwise for us as a village board to go against the ruling of a court.
Correct.
And it just sets a bad presence. For me, it it relates to if we have someone that's that's cited for speeding and and wants their fine money back after it's been adjudicated by our municipal court. It just flies in the face. Uh we may as well not even have courts then.
I agree. So with number forty, request by David Roth for village to forgive lien on property of thirty four oh six Schofield Avenue. Um what's your pleasure?
Move to deny.
Move to deny by Feeny. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Manel on the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor to deny the request by David Roth uh to forgive lien on property of thirty four oh six, which then upholds the court order. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. You've been denied, David. Okay. Uh number forty one, authorize trustee Lauren White to add citations to chapters one and two of the village official's handbook as recommended by the village attorney.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermeling, although uh on the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh forty two, uh request by PGA Inc. For village contribution to, whoop, 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 whoop. Okay, yep. Request by PGA Inc. For village contribution to extension of Nick Avenue from current termination near village boundary to county highway J. Uh Keith Donner, Administrator Donner, do you have something to add?
Um I don't have a regular chance to read the report as far as the requests, some of the issues that are associated with this whole thing.
This is gonna wreck a lot of people that go kissing back there at night, I'll tell you that.
Not anymore.
Just telling you, I uh, just telling you.
Are you experienced, Mark?
I'm just telling you. I'm just telling you.
I don't know if uh Gary is on the line. I think he indicated he would have some uh trouble being here tonight in person, so. Um I think he talked to me briefly right before the meeting started tonight. As I made mention of in the report and the text, there's a letter from a DNR representative who reviewed the wetlands. Uh indicating that um to be some permits required and that there were, there was a proposal at that time, as I understand, in twenty fifteen for wetland mitigation.
Thank you.
There was a, there was a uh indication in that letter that the estimated cost of mitigation back then was a fifty thousand dollars. So there's still a, there's some design costs and one that still need to be permanent here. I guess to just to know that, I, you know, sort of, yeah, that budget estimate of a hundred ninety is probably not of the the cost that would be involved in extending the street in that event. I think there's some additional design costs and permitting costs. The um I guess the issue requires our um PGA is proposing this non-metallic mining in Coron Water, which they're right now, they right now do not have a approval for. I guess irrespective of any development though that's proposed, you know, and I guess, as I said, Gary is also proposing to buy some land in Weston and then create a a large lot rural type subdivision. Uh it's not necessarily an area we anticipate a development happening, but it's not saying it can't happen and there's nothing that prevents people from putting one or two houses out there. It's happened in Coron Water, on the Coron Water side already. Uh as I mentioned, we had some issues with that, as some of you may remember.
It's always been a safety issue.
It's in the best, in the springtime, it's nothing but a muck.
Well, i- if we change the road, it'll be better. Plus, it'll have another in- added interest. Which which, how would he access this Coron Water mining? From J or from?
Was to connect it to J.
Yeah, but.
That would be the entrance, the access into this land in Coron Water.
So so he would not be moving all this material through Nick, through Nick Avenue?
No, I think that would be certainly a expectation once, if this is done, that, you know, that's the exit out of the area and that they use the rest of Nick.
Yeah.
On the shore. Because shore, it's, you know, then you're ending up going on the shore, which ends up selling its own issues.
Yeah, so we we would mandate that J would have to be the entrance exit for that.
Right.
Okay, alright. You, uh, last week, we had a conversation, you and I did, and uh you had made a comment that it's it's a long time coming. Are you still feeling that way?
Well, I, my, I guess, I'd use them. At the floor, whatever, I use.
I've never heard anyone say that.
It's a ticking time bomb here, I think. So, I mean, at some point.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some houses built on Nick and then we're gonna end up with the same kind of an issue that we had how many years ago, so.
I I just, just real quick, Lauren, can you just clarify which way you mean that? Yes, it is. So yes, it should be extended or no? I I seriously want to know.
So I can tell you with my experience as a, as a police officer, there are many times that that we had to go down there.
Right.
And I know the road's been improved since, but to me, it made sense to go all the way to J.
I I I just sometimes, you know, our our dry sense of humor, you and I, I I didn't know which way you were going, so I just, as you were making a comment there, I just wanted to.
My only issue is, I don't think we should, if we're, if this goes through, I don't think we should pay for anything more than what's in our part.
Oh, yeah, I agree. Yep, I agree.
You know, if it ends in the middle of a forty.
But but in 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 my, in our conversations, and and not that nobody else is privy to this, but we were just having some conversation on this. This is something that maybe Coron Water wants, you know, we want it, but they might want it a little bit more, because I think there's more people addressing those land issues from their side than our side, right?
There was a big development that was planned.
Right, right.
A lot, like some time.
And then do we, if if this is gonna start to happen, do, Jen, do you, do you have to notify all those land? I know a lot of landowners on Nick. And 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 I know some that have Weston land and Coron Water land. We would have to notify them, right?
Not for, so they would have to go through a non-metallic mining permit with the Cronin water.
No, I meant just for the road.
No, it's.
We don't have to, if we operate that road.
It's already on the map, a roadmap.
Oh.
At least that's recall as a law enforcement officer, then it was, there was like a dotted line, proposed road.
You would go through a plating process on it, like.
Okay.
But that doesn't require any notification.
And and then I I was trying to see, and I'm I'm getting way ahead of myself, and Keith, I need to let you talk. But from J, you know, from Weston Avenue, and then you 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 hit Zinzer, and then Zinzer in by the gun issue, and then, and then to Nick. Okay, so that's my, that's my, the way my head is thinking about how long J is. You know, you can access it from Nick now, and then you you can't get all the way through, but is there a possibility of punching Zinzer through? Or would we have no access on our side except for J and Nick?
There's a lot of wetlands.
That's what I thought, like a ton of wetlands.
If you see, so.
The Bull Junior goes through there.
Yeah, so you can see all the blue up there.
Yep.
So we didn't really do anything with that area. It's all an ag. So that could be something, because they'd be looking at putting in a subdivision, so.
But but on the Coron Water side?
No.
Oh.
Our side is a, is a potential, a large lot subdivision. On the Cronin water side, it's just a non-metallic mining.
So, uh is it close to J for us to have, is is that high enough land by J or or closer to Nick? Where?
There's an eighty, is it an eighty?
It's a little bit better than this one.
Uh it's a, it's a, it's what's, it's like an odd dimension forty. It's it's where there's some, I think, uh discrepancy in the range line or whatever. They had to make up so that that forty is actually longer than a and and wider than.
Okay.
Get out to J, I think.
Mike's got a.
Yeah, I see. Michael here.
Yeah, so that orange is what they were looking at.
So I'm like.
Village.
But where's Nick? Where's?
Nick is. Nick is right there. Let's go there, honey.
Oh, and it goes into Timber Ridge Lane?
Turns into Timber Ridge Lane.
Ah, okay. I I just, I just want to see how much we're gonna end up having to.
So that little pink.
Yeah.
That pink north and south line there, that, might if you take cursor over there. The one that's at that at the boundary between Coron Water, or yeah, between uh the two villages and the two towns.
Ah.
So that's. Looks like the four corners.
Oh, you're kidding me. So that's.
Coron Water and that's Town of Ringo.
Town of Reed and Town of Ringo.
Town of Ringo.
I'll be darned. All inside J. Inside J. So J is on the outside of that.
All to the west of J, yes.
Yep, well.
So, one time.
Thank you.
Ed and Ringo were I guess planning to contribute to this destruction. Um, we don't know if they are still, they've they've taken the position, we understand now that they're not not planning to contribute anything, because they're, you know, they they don't need to, and I don't know what benefit, they probably view it that there's little benefit for them, if any.
Keith, can can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Gary.
Do you mind if I step in for a couple minutes?
Sure.
Or maybe it's not my time. I just was gonna uh update a little bit on that. Ringo, I talked to Al from Ringo, because this is something we looked at five years ago before Michael uh bought his, that hundred and ten acres right at the end of it. He bought it, uh he's a, he's a, he's a business owner that ended up building on J. He's the one that's got the shed going up that the trust has spelled on this summer on. He ended up building off of J because he bought the hundred and ten acres off of Nick at the end, because he heard the road was going through well. That was us trying to get the road extended, and then he ended up buying the hundred and ten acres. Um and so that's, it kind of went dead for a while. Now Grochek, which bought the five hundred acres. Um and Broji, he he passed away and it's his wife that, and then her son um has a place over there as well, but she sells off some property every few years to keep up with her health and keep up with her living. So, we, if we purchased the hundred and ten acres, we will do a the, a subdivision over on our side eventually, but we will do a quarry with a pond. And then it'll be houses developed around the, around that pond. Um right now, the only other current property that's available for sale is, there was three hundred and twenty acres on Weston side. Um a gentleman beat me to the punch on an eighty, but it was the middle eighty, which is in red. Which was okay. Uh we purch- we've got an offer, accepted offering on the stuff in the orange for the eighty. And then on the other side, um.
That one twenty? Gary, did we lose you?
Yeah, we must have lost.
So what you referred to is that that those three forties to the east of the orange.
Sorry about that. Are you there?
Yep, we originally.
I'll go back into my zoom, I'll go back into my zoom map to see if I could see that purple area. Anyway, uh the the there's a, you'll see on, let's just start on the Coron Water side. Just to the right of me, or yeah, where the cursor is, that would be Michael's property. He bought a hundred and ten. That's what we were first trying to do is buy that. From there going all the way to the back, yep, towards Mitch has got a property to the south there off of Martin Road where his quarry is. Um but anyway, the, Michael ended up buying that and he he was told that the road was gonna get pushed through from J. Well, that was us. And the only way that we would contribute half the cost of that road was if we could, if we could open up a a rock quarry there uh for for, again, in future development, we would be building homes around, around the pond. So, then anyway, that that got sold and then they just put this back up for sale a while ago and I was waiting for her to get her her price down to where it needed to be. And we we actually negotiated a a good deal with her on it. In the meantime, the gentleman next to us in the blue, he bought an eighty acre parcel. Yep, there you go. And he bought that eighty. There's a one right in front of that that's been owned for quite some time by someone else. Yep, right there. Um then if you go right next door, that's Grochek's sons. They kind of just have a camper out there. The rest of the stuff in the green is is owned by um the mother yet. That's still available for sale or will be available for sale coming up. And um there's a good amount of property, like go to the left of the purple, or even on the, that side, there's some more Finsky property. You're not, it used to be Stanley Finsky, now you got um oh, what's her name that's got the hundred acres across from the golf course for sale? She's got that deed to her as well from her dad. But there's some good developmental land there off of Weston and Coron Water side. That's why I figured if we would throw an offer of, if we paid for the, number one, for the health and safety of the people that are down there, and I do understand like Rick Reimers is the last house where the cursor is right now. That's where the road is improved until right there. Um it does go down through the a low area where the creek goes across. Um, yep, right about there. And then it gets back up to that red area, right about where the red, yep, right about in there is um it's 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 up, it's getting high again. So from there out to to the end of the cul-de-sac or the dead end right now, it's, the road is pretty decent. Um there's a s- a section that we discussed when we met with Cronin water and and the staff of Weston. Uh this last, last week here, that where the Bull Junior goes, there there will be some improvements that'll have to be done there. Now, does that have to be done right away? I I don't know. I don't, I don't believe so. Our intent was always to access out on to J. Um that property right now is typically hunting property. Nobody really wants to build out there just to to the fact of how far back it is and it costs a lot of money to get power back there. Now, the gentleman in the middle, um in the red, that he's closing in February, he's looking to bring power there, whether he's coming from Rick Reimer's side or the end of J side, I'm not sure. I'm assuming he's probably gonna pull a building permit. Um, I can't answer for that right off the top of my head, but I know he's looking for power there for, I'm assuming for a house. Michael was gonna request power on his one ten down on the end. Um but he said he he decided to build off of J and and it actually butts his property off of J, so it ties right into his his hundred and ten like a T. Um he was gonna build there, but the cost of power was so significant, he chose buying that lot on J and just tying that into where he's got. Now, the other thing is that property's selling for around twenty one hundred bucks an acre, which is really reasonable. Um that's why I tried to tie up that other highland across the road, that eighty acres for development in Weston. Uh we just got done doing a development down in Mozzanee, which was thirty lots. Um anywhere from two and a half was minimum acreage to seven acre parcels. And that thirty acres or thirty lots, which was ninety acres, sold out in in thirteen months, sold out. So there's some good demand for country lots. Um but I I think until we open J, this land is never gonna be um desired. And I think you're gonna see the cost of the land. That's why I tried to secure the stuff on the right or across the road to the north um for development, because as soon as we bought that one ten, and if we can get the road pushed through there, you're gonna see that property go up to thirty five hundred to four grand an acre. So there's some good property on that stretch that's buildable. You get down by Zinzer's, got some stuff on the corner down there. Um. Um, um, there's a bunch of property on the opposite end before it turns over. The villages, between the village and Cronin water have done a great job with, uh, rebuilding that road from, uh, Shorey Avenue all the way over to, uh, Rick Reimer's house there. So, I, I, our thought was last, five years ago, we thought it would be, you know, we thought it would be around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand bucks to build it, we said we would try to contribute, you know, half the building of the cost of the road if we bid the project, um, and if we know we're, we're bidding the project, um, we can take the material costs right off of that, whatever we choose, choose to do for the road to make sure that the project cost, uh, comes in at, at half of where it should. So, our intention was for just looking for taxable incentive or buildable properties to bring tax base in, as well as us, we would go forty acres, we'd take a, like, if we started our quarry, we would go in the second forty back, um, and we would do a, a pond, so we could build all the way around it. Um, so we would try to be away from anybody else as a neighbor, and we would try to improve that road from there out to Jay, we would never ever wanna go left, or, or towards, uh, east, east Nick, or to the west, out, we, we're looking to come out on Jay, so. Um, and then also, just to throw that in there, if we do do the development, the rest of that mile and a half road that Michael and Keith have been talking about from Rick Reimers over to that, start of that, um, eighty acres there, or to the start of ours, that wouldn't necessarily have to be fixed right away, or the improvements right away, because Reimers and all those people down there have a way to get out currently, and if we would extend the road and pick, pick up half that cost, we would be coming out Jay's side, so that interconnection, I think is, it's the worst in the spring because the creek overflows the road. Um, and it's soft, definitely very soft, uh, because it's not, it was just like built for a logging road back in the day. So, the, the, like I said, the village and, uh, village of Weston and Cronin water's done an exceptional job on that road, it's probably one of the nicer gravel roads I've ever been on. Um, but, uh, uh, they've done a great job with it up to that point of, uh, the end of Rick's property at, at the current moment. So, that was our, that was pretty much what we wanted to do, we were trying to do that several years back. Um, but there will be some, once, once these properties, and there's another exit in there, some of these properties are gonna pop, I know Michael, the gentleman that bought on the end that one ten, he would sell his for development property as well. Um, once, once the road opens up there, so. Um, and Groschek's are gonna be opening more property up as well. I'm su, I'm sure in the next year or two, or whenever she's gonna need more money, they'll coming down the road. And the, and the family doesn't really, the kids don't really have the wha, wherewithal or the financial means to, to purchase or, or to, uh, help her out in any way. So that's all I got, unless anybody has any questions, um.
Okay, Keith, thank you, Gary. Keith?
Thank you.
So, um, when does Cronin water meet, talk about this?
I'm not sure, Keith, I, I kinda forgot about when, when Cronin water was gonna mention something, the board, they talked about doing special assessments, and I, uh, Jen and Keith, um, I learned a little bit more of that after the meeting. Um, if the road needed to be improved for that mile and a half, I'm not quite sure how much, probably the majority of the improvement's gonna be in the lowland, where culverts and maybe raising the road up some, so it doesn't flood over, but, um, if, if that, if there's special assessments, I, I, I presume they were saying I was gonna have to pay for all of it. But, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not encouraging anybody else to be getting assessed for it, but, um, i- if that, if, if they wanted me to pay for that mile and a half of road, I, I plus pay for the road to get out to Jay, I said that the project's dead. So, i- if, if there's some special assessments that need to be done, um, on the way down there, um, and can be prorated, I, I'm, I'm sure that could be something to look at, I'm not sure. Keith, you guys have kinda talked a little bit about that, whether that would go through or not, or whatever it may be, I know it's kind of a, nobody's got extra money to fix roads, but if the gentleman in the cross from Groschek's there, where he's got his camper parked out there, um, if he requests a building, or a, you know, a building permit, I think we're in trouble no matter what. So, um, and it, again, it's all hinges on us being able to get a permit from Cronin water for the mining, uh, to be able to contribute to the road to extension, cause we would basically make all the materials right on site and utili, utilize them to build that, that roadway through there. As well as if we need to do something down Nick Avenue, the least cost for trucking for materials could be right there, so.
So the reference, or the discussion that we had with Cronin water was, they were taking the, they were throwing out what the hardline position would be, that if, if this road is done, then we make the developer a hundred percent responsible for it, and then if there's improvements on the other, you know, special assessment to the developer as well, and I don't know, that probably wouldn't hold up as being reasonable. But, um, whether or not we would wanna entertain some kind of a assessment or impact fee, if, you know, someday we had to pave that road, those are things we'd have to consider. I guess I'm, I, as I, I think I pointed out in the report, maybe we need to look at this from a perspective, even if there's no development, no more development, does the connection help us, and I think the answer on that, in my opinion, is yes, I mean, it does help, it does create another access for public safety for the people that live there, so. Um, anyway, I guess, I certainly need some, uh, perspective and input from the board on their thoughts on this whole thing.
Would this be a road we'd put in? I mean, we, our.
Well, we'd have to, it would have to be publicly bid, for one thing.
Okay. But it's gonna stay.
We'd have to agree with Cronin water and Weston.
It's gonna stay gravel, right?
Right now, that's the way it's.
Yeah, so I just thought maybe we could do it with Cronin water, or whoever, Ringo, whoever could contribute. Just, couldn't we do it ourselves to keep the cost down?
Um, new construction, I don't, barely with, but I.
Okay.
Or a wheelhouse, but I think to upgrade the other existing road, that, like we did the other parts, that would be, that would be something we could handle.
Okay.
Uh, Mark, could I? Sorry, Mark, I was, I was just gonna, sorry for, for interrupting, I was just gonna make a mention that when we were at our meeting with, uh, Cronin water, granted, the delineations would have to be done again, but uh, Reed, Reed didn't seem to, it didn't look so good on Reed's side, so if you look through that map, Reed wouldn't benefit anything because it was wetland, um, mostly wetland on their side, so they're not gonna gain any tax base on that extension. Um, potentially, you know, on their map, that, that, uh, Cronin water had up, that Randy had up, Ringo seems to have some property on, on the north side there, that they could benefit some tax base off of. When I did talk to Rand, uh, um, uh, not Randy, um.
Al.
Al from Ringo. Um, he said that they were fine with allowing uh, Ri, the road to go through there, but they didn't wanna incur any costs. Um, they're the ones that drew up the plans, had MTS draw up the plans four or five years ago. Um, the permitting and the plans, I believe Keith, um, you may have to help me a little bit, but I thought Nick had mentioned to me that those plans were good, possibly yet through this year, before they'd have to be all resubmitted again. Um, but, i- if we can help contribute the cost of, you know, if the road, the road, I think, was bid at, uh, they had the specifications done for the road, we bid it, I think we were at like one thirty. Um, I think there was a one eighty, one, one eighty-nine, a, a, a way up to like two hundred and ninety thousand or something like that. But, um, that didn't, that didn't include, at that time, we bid it just, just be, and, and it was passed when Michael already bought that one ten, so we were just bidding it, bidding it, not, not contributing anything, and then they called and asked if we would contribute half, and I said, well, uh, the property's been bought already, so it's, it's, we can't, we can't contribute if we don't have the property, the, and the materials to be able to utilize to help build the road, like, we can make the breaker rock or a road base, um, to, to go across the whole, the whole thing, so. Just wanted to mention about the Ringo and Reed portion.
Who are we talking about, Michael who?
That's the last name of the guy.
Okay, I, I just wanna point a, point a clarification that it's not Michael in the back here, so.
No.
All right.
Mike, Mike was the gentleman personally, I can't think of his last name off the top of my head right now, but.
Who?
Real nice.
Carter, Michael Carter.
Yeah, he bought that one ten, and then he also got that property. If you go to a second forty, you just take that right out to Jay, he, he's got that piece right there as well, where he built his house and his, and that shed as well.
Okay. All right.
I'll be quiet.
More thoughts, or Keith, you have more?
Um, I guess, just that we were going to propose to be part of this, I think we should, there should be a written agreement between our, you know, ourselves and Cronin water on the bidding, and then how much we would hold the developer responsible for, versus each of us, you know, fifty percent of the balance. And then, you know, I guess, again, the cost, I think it's still to be determined based on some unknowns here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Lauren?
Well, I have a question, why Ringo and Reed wouldn't be involved in this process, because if we're proposing, would we stop our project right at that, our village boundaries and let Ringo and Ringo and Reed just fight over the rest of it, or, or, I mean, if we build a, like they do in Milwaukee, a bridge to nowhere, what good does it do us if we can't connect all the way to Jay? And I don't think we as a village should pay for somebody else's road.
That was my question too. So if it doesn't.
Lauren?
If I can respond to that, um, so the law, the statutes actually allow a municipality to lay out roads in neighboring municipalities. Um, I think Reed and Ringo probably take the position this has no benefit to them. It's similar to how Rothschild responded also when we upgraded Birch Street by the hospital. If you wanna improve it, don't knock yourself up. So, uh, kind of the same thing applies here, I would guess, but certainly we can approach Ringo, and we wouldn't see what they have to say about it.
I, we definitely should, uh, I mean, we have a, you know, their community as well. And if they'd be willing to contribute, that means less that we'd have to pay. Worst thing they can do is say no.
But I think we're gonna have.
Is it why I, is it that why I, for everybody that, 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 the existing gravel road does end right at the, uh, right at the four communities, right at the intersection, right at the intersection.
I believe it.
Yeah.
It's the road currently. Uh, which side?
On the west side.
The west side, Nick Avenue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Steve?
Yeah, no, I, I'm just gonna say, I, I could see that Reed and Ringo might not wanna do it, but I, I think we're gonna have the same thing that we have on you know, Weston Avenue, where one side is one, one is the other one, or, or, like I said, Birch, and also Alderson, but I remember how many years ago that was, where Shorey got redone how many times, because it was so, so bad, and finally they ended up, just, we ended up just replacing it, and then, I think it was a year later, then Rothschild did it the other way, you know, on their stuff, so I, I, I think we need to approach Reed and Ringo, but I, I I need to start all over again with doing the, uh, wetland delineations, and getting permits from the, if we have that right now from the DNR, we should give some serious consideration to this.
Good question. If we did that, and it goes through Ringo and Reed, who's plowing it?
Good question. And will they accept the road that's built? All those are.
But I think that's, that's, I mean, you know, now Ringo and Reed are gonna say, wait a minute, we don't, we don't.
Well, who, who plows that portion of Nick now? We, we.
That houses, so we, even though the house is in Cronin water, we plow.
Yeah.
Cause we come up Nick and.
Cause we go down to Meacham.
Yeah, to Meacham, yeah, I know, I know.
Cronin water has West, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, for them to grab that, they'd have to come all the way around and be almost silly, yeah.
But I'm just saying is, now we're going through, you know, there's Weston and Cronin water, but now we're going through Ringo and Reed.
Well, Ringo and Reed don't plow there because the county does Jay, right?
Well, it does Jay, right.
Yeah, but they're off roads, they do, so.
Well, yeah, they're, that's just one guy driving the truck.
Are we talking a forty?
It's, yeah, it's a little more than a forty.
A, but not an eighty?
No.
So it's a, a little bit more than a forty for Ringo and Reed, okay?
Yeah, I know, so.
You'd, you'd almost have to go out to Jay just to spin around? Unless we have a turnaround there. Okay, well, I, I think the question is, is are we gonna move forward? Right, or, or is, is this a move forward position, or is this a, a, a motion tonight to approve?
I think in, I think we wanna, I think, Gary's looking for some kind of assurance and principle that we would do this, I, and again, I don't know that we know of, we certainly can't see a final number or, uh, either on anybody's part right now.
That, that's why I said we could move forward to see where it takes us.
Right, discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Discussion, I guess, yeah, to, uh, go ahead to research to find out, because I mean, if we got, we're, we're gonna end up paying for the whole road, the whole way.
Well, no, I, Cronin water's gonna help, I think, I think that's the discussion I've heard, maybe, I don't know, but, but Lauren, you were, you're saying yes to extend.
Well, no, not to extend, I think we should, we need, so far, this is on the air, we need more information or.
Yeah, we need more information, we need a partnership. But connecting Nick, cause initially when you and I had a talk, I'm, I'm going, are you crazy? And I'm going, why would you even entertain that, I mean, I, I just kinda, I don't wanna bring up the activities on Nick Avenue. I, I just couldn't understand.
You seem to know enough.
Why, why we would, uh, you know, bring that through, so it just didn't make sense, so, anyway. All right, so enough of that.
Well, I guess. Uh, I guess, conditions would have to be.
Community partnership?
Yeah. Um, reasonable cost, making sure that the, um, the, uh.
Permission from the DNR hasn't expired. Who are the town chairman's, Ringo and Reed right now?
Al Christiansen's are Ringo.
Al Christiansen, okay, and then what about Reed's?
Uh, I think his name was.
Uh, Jack Dolman's still, right?
Gary probably knows, Gary, who's the town chairman for Reed?
I, I didn't, I only reached out to Al, last time I talked to Reed was five years ago. My plans were drawn up.
That, that was just my quadrant when I was on the county board when I lived down in Hatley, so. I used to go to those board meetings all the time, and they were, it very, they were a lot of fun, actually. Okay.
One, one more thing I just wanna bring up is that we really have to look at it, whether or not we think that by opening that road up, we can get how much developable or how much, and I know there's not a lot that gets left of the village to keep out of taxes, but if we can get some, um, rural development in there, I mean, our, our plan would be, depending upon the layout, I have to get a layout done on it, once we get a, yes, we'll extend or not extend, or think about it, then we'll get a layout done on that eighty across the road, but if there's any more property that's available, that.
Peter Ray, I know the name, thank you.
But we just have to figure out that tax base, you know, it, it'll open another area for, for taxable, uh, taxable, um, property anyway, buildable.
Okay.
The dollar amount that, that he's been talking doesn't, it seems reasonable, it doesn't seem excessive, so I, I, I think we should continue.
We gotta see what Cronin water.
Um, we have a motion? To move forward, or no?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ziegler, second, second by Feeny. Any more discussion?
Can we just clarify the, uh, motion, it's to, to basically authorize the administrator to proceed forward with discussions with Cronin water?
Yep.
So what is it? I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Wait, to proceed forward with, like, to direct the administrator to proceed forward with discussions with Cronin water? Am I?
Other.
And other.
And out, and the other two.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify.
Direct administrator to, to have discussions with Cronin water?
Yes, yes.
Reed and Ringo.
Just move it, move it forward, so we can get more information back to make a a, a clear decision, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Well, I was gonna say, if he can't get a, a mining permit, this might be mute.
Right.
Cause.
That's good, that's up to Gary.
That's up to Gary, though, that's, that's not gonna fall on us.
I know, but I, you know.
Yeah, you're right, you're, you're right. That, we, we don't have to, you're right, okay, so, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Go, Gary. Forty-three, approved change, thank you, Gary. Forty-three, approved change of name for party to land purchase and development. Development agreement for lot seven, Business Park South from Norcon Corporation to JWP Holdings LLC.
Motion to approve.
A move, a motion by Minell, second by Ermling, on the question. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, number forty-four, discussion of village board priorities for projects and policies to facilitate development. That's our extra sheet right here?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. There's a lot of good stuff on here.
Outline, you know, the bullet points that were in the cover sheet for this. So every, all the board members and I think the department directors have this.
Do you have one?
No.
No, does he have one? It's just a one page, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, everybody else have one? There's a little bit in the back, right?
Right. There you go.
Right there. If they're administrator.
I have it, okay. So. First, have, there was some discussion at the last, um, plan commission meeting about some things and I know trustee Minell had some. Questions about, um. You know, how do we facilitate development, encourage development, that kind of thing, and what kind of options do we have? Um, I know we, you know, we've had some. Discussions back and forth with some of our consultants, our financial consultant. For one, um, primarily, but. I guess. As those questions come up from a single trustee, of course, we need to have, I guess, a better understanding of what the entire board feels. Where we can really go off and chase some of these things. So. I guess there's also been some other. Concerns expressed about, you know, you know, we need to make progress, and I, I get that, I. I guess part of that may be more of a discussion relative to my own performance review at some point in time and. You know, again, what your priorities are that we need to work with staff on, but, you know, you know, the first thing that comes to mind for me right now is. Some of our, you know, a lot of our plan commission meetings are kind of focused on. You know, changes that we, that are desired in the code and. You know, I think we finally got to a point where we have. Have had some longer discussions on at plan commission meetings about what specifically we want to change rather than just the general, and so. Um, that's example of something that takes time and kind of takes our, our attention away to other, to other things or from other things. Um, so. I guess aside from that, we have had some other projects that have been out there that we've been working on, you know, and the two things that come to mind are. The two corridor plans for Schofield Avenue and Weston Avenue. Want to move, the Weston Avenue. Corridor plan became a focus once. Camp Philip Center project was pretty much, uh, was put to bed about a year ago. And, you know, we, we have the capacity in our TIF to take on. Project cost. You know, of course, the recognition is that we have until twenty twenty-six to take on or to expend funds. For improvements within the TIF, TIF one. Similar timeline in TIF two, I think it's May versus March. Is that right, Jennifer, May for TIF two?
One wasn't, TIF one's March.
One is, yeah, TIF one is March and I.
The other one's.
Later in the year, but they're, they're in the same calendar year. So. Relative to the, for instance, the Weston Avenue and Schofield Avenue corridor plans. I guess a good part of that, the way maybe get those moved forward has been. Probably on staff shoulders, I, I can take some responsibility for that. Certainly for not getting things reviewed perhaps in, in time or. Other thing is we wanted to have a public hearing with all the residents and our, you know, current situation hasn't really been. Um, amenable, I guess, if you will, to having in-person public hearings. Um, I think we'll have to work around that by maybe renting a facility, renting western lanes and having a. A couple of hearings over there, open halls, whatever we're gonna do. I guess based on some conversation recently with a consultant. It's, it's, uh, I guess it's. If we push this along, move this along, we could have the corridor plans adopted by April, is that correct, Jennifer? That was kind of our discussion. Most recently. And then, I know another question was. When we start some of the utility design, uh, we could certainly obtain proposals on utility design. The street section, I think we've come to a. Some recommendation based on plan commission and board review of that corridor plan. I guess, you know, ultimately, it would be best if the corridor plan was adopted, I guess, to move forward, but. That, of course, determines right of way means and how much we might want to ask for there, I. So I guess an answer to that question, which trustee Minell opposed to me, I guess we could move some of that stuff along. I did talk with Michael about that, he had, in fact, asked about that. Um, about, you know, last week at one time. So I just threw, you know, a number of ideas out here too about some things that. You know. Could be in our. Our toolbox as well, that not just necessarily from Weston Avenue or the corridors, but. You know, they're, they could be applicable in the, in, in the TIF districts, some of the stuff outside the TIF districts. If you want me to go through this and talk about these things individually, if you can. Uh, the other. The other thing that. Trustee Minell had asked about is whether we, if we can bring our financial consultant. To a meeting with the board and talk about some of these things and. I guess, as I say at the end here, we could certainly do that, Greg is willing to do that, Greg Johnson, that is. And it would be more of a matter of talking about. What our options are, I don't know that, I, I don't think Ellers is gonna be in a position or would take a position of. This is what we think you should do, cause we have a number of options we can go get.
But he can paint the picture.
He can paint.
To better inform the board.
Right.
Right, like he did with the, the borrowing options.
Right.
Okay.
So, I know we've been here for a while already, and I, I don't know if you want to. Talk about any of these things a little bit more in detail, but I'll come back to them in a future meeting, I was planning to. Come back together with Greg as he, as he prepares to come and talk to us, if we'd like him to come in February or when he may be available.
Do we want to, uh, push, uh, a, a second meeting in February, in, in the beginning of the month with this? And Weston corridor and stuff?
We could.
Are you interested in that?
What, what would be the next time we would? Have discussion about the Weston and the corridor plan, would that be in the next plan commission? For.
Yeah, I'm just.
And you said April, you said it would be popping on April?
Next week from him, the draft, so what we talked about today. Was presenting the draft at the next plan commission meeting. Allowing the public to come at that one and then going through and scheduling the hearing later on. In April, and giving people like two months to get it.
For Weston.
For both of them, so what we would do is we would have Schofield Avenue.
Yep.
Like happen earlier in the day for a hearing because the board will actually be doing it, but we can have a joint meeting with everyone, that's how we've done it before. So everyone's hearing the same thing. Because Schofield Avenue has been presented to the public, but Weston Avenue hasn't.
Right.
They came to that first meeting and you guys had a couple of meetings as, as plan commissioners, talking about it, the last one was in December, so now he has a draft plan. That he'll get to us as staff and to the plan commission review and, you know, the public is watching, they'll. They'll come or listen in, then we'll still have it out there for. Until whenever I can schedule that hearing, most likely in spring, because if we add it to the conference of plan, you have to have some extra review time anyway for that, so.
So the hearing at, at here still or the hearing at Western Lane?
We would do both hearings at Weston.
Okay. But.
Originally, the C D A was involved in the first one for the Schofield Avenue. Um, and then Public Works and Utilities Committee was at the Weston Avenue one, so we probably would have all of you guys there.
Yeah, that's good.
Cause you're all involved.
Okay.
So I did also provide a spreadsheet there that Jessica actually prepared for me.
Yep.
Good. To, uh, show you what our, that new construction. Allowed us as a percentage increase in our left. The far right column here. Cause. Guess the principle is. New growth helps us, but we can't predict what the actual impact is gonna be on our tax rate. So that's the, kind of the. I don't know, the thing that doesn't really make sense, the thing that probably drives us mad, we would, we can't really. Say that, you know, ten million dollars of new construction gets us so much more on our. You know, on our, that new construction number. You know, or, or that new. That new, the net amount we can ask on our levy is that for that new construction and that percentage again. And forgive me if I'm explaining that incorrectly, but. Anyway. It would be nice if we could do that and then it might help us better evaluate some of this stuff, you know, how much should we? Think about contributing if any, I mean. I guess the, the traditional philosophy is that all development, a new subdivision is gonna give the industry liabilities for it. That's why the developers should pay for it all and put it in the cost of the lots and then we take it on, we have to do the maintenance of it. Or cover it with public safety, uh, you know, fire police. You know, now there's. We're trying to. Evaluate whether it makes any sense for us to contribute some things here, you know, and I. As I point out in here, maybe we can look more closely or a little bit more liberally, if you will, uh, at. What do we consider oversizing for utilities, what do we do for looping? Connecting streets, you know, that's another, another situation, and we're gonna be talking to a developer here about. Some property off of Bird Street that has recently sold, he's happy, has purchased the. Property, uh. On the, yeah, former hitter property.
Oh, really?
Planning to do some development there, so we'll be meeting with him. And he does not, he's saying, well, I questioning why we needed street connection over to the east. And, you know, those, those are things that. You know, we end up. In the past, we've said, well, either you provide it or you just provide, you know, and. End up with unapproved right of way that needs to get approved when the next developer comes in, so. You know, do we just jump in on the front end and say, let's, we'll, we'll help this facilitate it, so. Those are things we have to talk about and how we do those, I guess.
How many want to proceed?
I think we're gonna have to, we should have a. I think that we should have a meeting with the consultant and then have kind of a working session of different things and. But I think Keith needs to spell out some of these questions, just like the, the discussion we had tonight on the, the stuff on Nick Road, I, I. I don't remember having a discussion like that before where we're, we're stepping in helping her and I, I can see the benefit of that, so. My, my questions on this is that they're being pulled in a lot of different. Directions, and when I had conversations with Keith, um, I mean, it was just to say, what, you know, do we have to wait till everything gets approved for this plan? Because sewer and water is going in off Orion Street, whether, whatever gets approved, if there's gonna be sewer and water on Orion Street. My concern is that we're gonna be sitting here twiddling our thumbs, waiting for this plan to get approved, and then all of a sudden. We're running out of time to bid everything properly and obtain, you know, the cost for it and, and that kind of stuff. And, and we're gonna be under, under pressure then to, to jump at certain things. And I, and I just think that we can plan it all better, I was hoping we could.
Yeah, well, instead of waiting, you know, for planning or waiting for the board, the next meetings. Should we have a special working session with Ellers and? Getting some more, more information to that meeting and then dealing with that meeting in particular, you know, I mean, those subjects in particular.
Yeah, cause. It probably is better to have it separate from.
I agree.
Because right now our plan commission meeting is, you've got three hearings and.
It just gets so muddy, even tonight, it's, you know, muddy.
Right.
I mean, I, I can't believe the chief hasn't taken a call and walked out, you know. I mean, I, 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 seriously, I don't know why some of you are still here, so. I, I got chicken. I, I got, I got chicken noodle soup just waiting for me, I know.
Make a comment?
Yeah.
So, I can't help but think how you're gonna pay for services. I mean, what's my role in this whole big picture? Village administrator addressed, how do you? You're not covering any costs and historically, we've developed and developed and been promised officers and. You're so far behind.
Like the hospital, yeah, yeah.
So, how am I gonna police all this development? What's the plan? Perhaps ask Ellers how they're gonna, how you guys plan on policing all this?
At, at one time, we talked about impact, you.
Yeah.
I don't know if you recall that or not.
See, Schofield's looking at Ellers for a five-year plan, cause they have no idea how they're gonna keep up with their.
Well, I mean, case in point to Yee's question, you know, uh, you know, you said we're reacting and we are, I mean, the demand is so high for the drugs. Uh, how do you get more bodies and more money at that? Cause that's what you gotta splash at it, is more bodies, more money.
My fear is if you lose, lose public safety, nobody's gonna want to move here anyways.
Yeah, well, that's an absolute fact. Okay, so, back on cue.
But, clearly, you'll come to the meeting, wouldn't you?
Well, I, I don't know the scope of the meeting, but my, my input would just be if, if you're gonna have a financial discussion, and I don't know what the scope of it is, but. Part of that needs to be, I, I know the financial situation to some degree of the municipalities and it's, it's, it scares me, this discussion is scaring me. All this development, all the development that we've had, and I have a very narrow scope in this big picture, but everybody knows what that is. It's to provide safety to all these new residents and all this, the development and these new roads and. We are so far behind on staffing, how are we gonna do this? I, I don't know, it.
We have a discussion, it was just two years ago, I think, when we talked and, and I had the same. Issue, but I, I'm afraid that if you're not part of the meeting.
I'll be happy.
The significance to our financial consultant and, and weighing in on it, doesn't, it just, it, it.
And that's kind of my, my question or my, you know, is, is, can that be part of, of a financial discussion? Because it's expensive.
It has to be, but, but case in point for, you know, for, uh, Chief here is, that was a discussion when the hospital came. And the hospital is gonna produce this and it hasn't, I mean, it has, but it hasn't for you.
Correct.
Yeah, it has, but not for you.
And I understand the difficulty, you, you have to do these things and spend money in, to get a tax base, but. You're always falling behind because you're anticipating this money for revenue to increase your service levels, that, that hasn't happened.
Yeah.
And we're doing it again.
And that's just like, I say, like TIF. We use TIF money to develop all that area. But we can't use TIF money to plow the roads or police them or any of that.
Yep.
That all became part of, of the general fund, the actual TIF itself is paying for itself. But not the maintenance of it, and that's the same with any of your new subdivisions. I mean, that's great, but to be honest with you, I don't think. The taxes that we collect really pay for all the services that we have to provide for. Policing, roads, maintenance, just general, so, I mean. Yes, it, I'm sure we get something, you know, for them, but I. I'm not saying I'm not, I'm against development, don't get me wrong, I think we definitely need to look at Weston Avenue while we. TIF funds to work on that, I mean, for us to be dragging our feet while TIF. Time is running out is kind of silly because eventually we're gonna have to do it. And we aren't gonna have the tax base to do it on our own. But, I mean, when you're starting, I mean, some of this, one of them that just kind of came out and hit me was. Buying property and becoming a developer of residential subdivisions and I'm going. Wow, why would we want to shoot ourselves in the foot?
That's just a discussion though, I mean.
I know, but I don't.
Put together because. Looking at what other communities are doing across the state and wherever on, on how to manage this, how to manage and how to plan.
I don't think, right now, today, I, I'm not in agreement for us stepping in. To, to provide residential lots for people to build on, I don't think that's what we could do, it, that, that's not what, what. What municipalities are successful at, are we able to run sewer and water on Weston Avenue? Are we able to run sewer and water on Weston Avenue under our TIF to open up certain parcels that were zoned residential in the TIF? I, I think we should get that serious consideration.
Well, that's what I said.
Because if people are building houses, I mean, how many houses in your neighborhood? What is it? And I used to deer hunt in his neighborhood, you know, with, with my, you know, my neighbor owned it. And those houses are, are probably three fifty apiece, four, four hundred apiece. I, I suspect Keith, or I suspect Clay doesn't spend a whole lot of time in that neighborhood chasing down trouble, I, I.
Well, no, I agree that the, that
That's why.
I, I was gonna comment about.
Just one.
That TIF, we need to get back on track
Right.
On Weston Avenue, because TIF isn't going to, you know, if we're borrowing this money or we've got some money that I believe we're ahead of right now in TIF, but I think we need to do this. I'm not questioning that, but when I seen this developer residential, I'm going why would we even, and think about that?
I think that we need to explore what other communities are doing and not try to recreate the wheel, if Howard is doing some way that we're uncomfortable with, that's fine, but I don't think we should just not explore what other communities are doing. That was the only reason that I brought that up in our, in, in discussion with him, but.
Clint Howard is one of the most successful communities of the area, so that, that is somebody that if we're gonna emulate, we're gonna look at, look at what they've done and how they've been able to do it, we probably should do some research.
And pay for it, yep. Uh, Jessica has something to add?
I guess I just wanted to uh, please tell. Um, last year, we had eighteen million dollars in growth, that was our net new construction, eighteen million dollars. The amount that the state allows us to increase our levy was seventy-four thousand, that does not cover any of, certainly, it doesn't even cover the normal expenses.
Eighteen million.
What's, every, everything has a breaking point, and quite honestly, Chief Schultz and Chief Savage, I don't know how your departments haven't grown. I really don't, especially providing the quality of service. And when the state refuses to let local governments manage and govern themselves, this is the predictable end result. And it's infuriating.
So, getting back
So it would be, uh.
To the working meeting.
We should have it February first and have the consultants and have everybody here.
Yep, can we make that happen? Jen and Keith?
We'll have to just, we'll have to see what Greg's ability is.
Okay, yeah. So we can't figure it out now, but let's, let's shoot for that, okay?
Yep.
Exactly. Is the motion, or is this just something that is, is part of the?
I don't.
What's that?
I would say just a consensus.
Yeah, just a consensus of the board and staff and everyone else here tonight.
So, to meet with Ellers on February first?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to set the meeting up to have a, a working session so that we can deal with a few projects, a few issues instead of having it under the guise of, ooh, guise, I use that word. Under the guise, it's not masking, I wasn't masking it. So, u- under the guise of, uh, planning or board, okay?
It's a thought thinking.
Yeah.
And, a quick question for Director Troutman. Uh, you said that we have eighteen million in new construction, but we.
Net new construction.
Net, net new, and then, uh, we can only raise the tax levy by seventy-four thousand?
It was like seventy-four, seventy-six thousand.
Yep, okay. And then the previous year was uh, thirteen, seven, or no, I'm sorry, what was last year's figure?
Um, the net new construction's not listed on that.
Okay.
The percent is listed, which is the percent that we could increase our levy. Like for twenty twenty, the one point four seven, that represents eighteen million dollars of net new construction.
Okay.
Obviously, the year before was less than eighteen million.
Right. Which also less dollars, yes. I think, just off the top of my head, for some reason, thirteen million and sixty-four thousand is sticking out in my head.
Okay. So we good on forty-four? Keith, good? Thanks for putting all that work in together here.
Yeah, yeah, so you wanna talk about more specifics?
Yeah, on the first. Okay.
Board, PC? This board?
Um, Jen, what do you think, board and PC?
So are we just, what, are we talking Weston Avenue specifically, or Schofield Avenue, or?
Oh, oh.
Let me look to see what I get.
We don't have to decide tonight.
Yeah, cuz I.
You want two guys all work together?
About it, cuz I don't know what we're gonna have.
Okay. We'd like to have you there, Chief, too. Okay? Anyone else who wants to attend? All right, attorney referrals, I don't think there's any, are there? And, uh, now, uh, moving into closed session for nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Uh, you want both, both points, too? Uh, one bullet point, negotiate, negotiation strategy for purchasing property for commercial slash industrial development ordering village, business park. And second bullet point, negotiation strategy for potential land sale and development agreement with Tommy Dodge to purchase and develop land in the business park. Oh, we have to give a. Yeah, I was waiting for Lauren to tell me, I, I.
I was watching Chief Schultz comment.
Okay, I'll make the motion to go into closed session. Second, uh, motion by Zhong, second by Feeny. Uh, no discussion, all those, uh, roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Ermeling?
Hi.